Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let me call to order the Planning Commission meeting for May 24, 2010. If I might ask you, would you please rise with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
Thank you very much. Will the Recording Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Adam.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Lund. Absent. Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Chair Grimney.
Here.
Now is the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling on a future agenda. Please note that if you speak under public comments, you must complete a white speaker card and file it with the Recording Secretary prior to the public comment portion of the agenda that is called. The speaker's remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member. Speakers are limited to five minutes and the light above will, on the podium, will go yellow when you have one minute remaining. Mr. Towne, are there any announcement continuances that you'd like to make at this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to mention, for the record, that staff did receive an additional letter from Dr. Karen Martin this afternoon, which has been forwarded to the Planning Commission in your supplemental packet. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. Will the Secretary please call case 6A?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6A regarding case S U M J 2009-703-55, O T M N L T P 2010-70050. Applicant: One Baxter Way LLP. Request: To allow installation of one gateway sign, revise two freestanding monument signs, allow one new monument sign, and encroach into protected zone of one oak tree and one landmark tree. Location: One Baxter Way.
Thank you very much. The staff report this evening is given by Mr. Joey Lynn from the Community Development Department. Good evening, Mr. Lynn.
Good evening. For your first consideration this evening, a special use permit application, major modification application, has been filed requesting to allow waiver for one existing monument sign and installation of two more freestanding signs. This application also involves encroachment into a protected zone of one oak tree and one sycamore tree, which is also included in this application. If I may direct your attention to the screen. The applicant is requesting for special use major modification, a waiver seeking a new freestanding monument sign, which will be considered as a fourth monument sign. The code allows for one freestanding monument sign. Also for a replacement of existing monument sign, which will enlarge from the current existing of five feet by approximately about 12 feet to a larger sign than what the code allows. The applicant also seeks to request for a new city gateway sign, which will be considered as the fifth sign for the parcel. The applicant is also requesting part of this modification and the application for a new sign would encroach into one existing oak tree located at corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lakeview Canyon Road. Also, a landmark tree permit application for encroachment of a sycamore tree for the replacement of existing sign on the west side of the building. This is an area photo of the building. The applicant is seeking to, for a freestanding sign located on the corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Lakeview Canyon Road. Coming down south, the location on the southeast corner of the parcel is an existing large sign with the ID of Westlake on it. On toward the west side of the building is where the applicant will be seeking to enlarge the existing monument sign. The applicant is also seeking to build a city gateway sign on the west grassy area to the west of the building. This is a view of the entrance to the office building. Analysis of the first replacement sign. The height will increase from existing approved six feet to eight feet high by 25 feet wide. The entire sign would be 42 wide, including the, a partial wings on both sides that would merge into the existing monument sign. The face panel itself is 20 feet wide by six feet wide. The sign would read, would allow for two corporate names. Each letters would be approximately about 24 inches tall. This sign would encroach into a one landmark tree for this modification. This is a picture of existing sign that's to be modified. The tree on the background would be the sycamore tree that it would be encroaching. For the new monument sign, it'll be six feet high by seven feet wide. It's located at corner of Lakeview Canyon Road and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. A construction of this monument sign would encroach into one existing oak tree. The current design doesn't meet the city's maximum allowable free monument sign, which is at six feet wide by eight feet, at six feet high by eight feet wide. This is the corner. The proposed freestanding sign would be located about the location of the for lease sign would be. As for the gateway sign, it'll be located on the open grassy area closer to Westlake Boulevard on the west of the building. The sign would ID Welcome, City of Thousand Oaks. Current city gateway sign is proposed at approximately about 40 feet wide by eight feet tall, going up to about 8, 10 feet tall at the maximum height. It'll use pin mounted letters with external illumination to provide a shadowing effect. The sign would use a ledge stone background, which would match with other city signs. There'll be also a oak tree that will be added to the background of this proposed sign. However, the final design still needs to be approved by the city. This is the location of the great grassy area on the west side of the, of the building. The applicant has built a mock-up indicating the size of the sign and the location. This is a view from the edge of the freeway where the traffic, when they look to the north, that will see the proposed city gateway sign. This is a view of the city gateway sign facing the freeway. The proposed conceptual design has the sign approximately about 40 feet wide, with the letters still will be determined by the city. There'll be landscaping all around with decorative stones. This is an existing Westlake sign that was built back in the 1960s. This sign was built at that time to indicate a, more of a marketing of the tract Westlake rather than a, indicating the city of Westlake. Going back to existing sign, this sign is approximately about 60 wide, 60 feet wide by, at the maximum height, approximately about 16 feet high. This application requires Planning Commission approval for the freeway oriented sign, which would increase from the existing six feet to eight feet high in allowing maximum proposed at 58 feet square feet instead of a 32 square feet allowed by the city code. Also for two more monument signs, which is the one located on the corner of a corporate sign indicating the tenants and the city gateway sign on the grassy area. The proposed sign does, is consistent and architecturally compatible with the property, and it would provide the appropriate identification that the applicant is seeking for their building. The condition does require the material complement the building, and they do meet the city architecture requirement. Oak tree and landmark tree application has been processed and has been recommended for approval by the city's consultant. All the signs mean intent and purpose of the sign ordinance. That recommends approval of S U M J 2009-7-703-55 and the oak tree permit application 2010-7050. This concludes staff's presentation. Staffs available for questions.
Do we have any questions of staff? Commissioner Reynolds?
Good evening, Mr. Lynn. I see where the Baxter sign, the letters are going to be two feet, I think. How big are the letters going to be on the city sign? Because what you show in the pictures, the Welcome, seems so very small. I just wonder if it's going to be in relationship, let's say, to the Westlake sign, the letters?
Well, the existing Westlake sign has the letters approximately about four feet tall. The proposed sign is still, could be still determined by Planning Commission or, in this case, the city. Currently, it's proposed at approximately about two feet high.
The same as the Baxter, then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adam.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Lynn. So, the Lakeview sign, that complies with the sign ordinance, correct? It's just that it's a more sign than what the zone allows?
That is correct.
Okay. But the other two signs are a couple of feet over the six feet limit, correct?
Right. The proposed sign next to the building, the applicant is proposing to exceed the six foot high maximum.
Okay.
The city gateway sign has, the city code doesn't really have a restriction on the size itself.
Oh, yeah. I was going to add, so that sign's exempted from the height because it's a gateway sign, then?
Well, it'll be a monument sign that advertises the city in this case. There could be exceptions.
All right. Okay. Just one other thing. That Westlake sign, there's no plans to remove that or anything, is there?
Not on this application.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, that's, that's kind of an historic sign. And, oh, one other thing. We didn't condition the applicant to build the Thousand Oaks sign, did we? They just stepped up and offered to build it themselves?
Yes. It was part of the application for this entire, including everything.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Lynn, I have one question. I also was a little confused about the Westlake sign, and Commissioner Adams' question kind of clarified that, as it stands right now, that sign is intending to stay. What's the approximate distance between the Westlake sign and the Thousand Oaks sign?
Staff doesn't have that information, but I would say probably at least 500 feet.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Now, we'll go to the applicant, who will have 15 minutes, and the applicant is One Baxter Way, who's being representative, represented by John Prabhu. If you could come to the podium here, and if you could state for our record your name and city of residence, and again, you'll have 15 minutes.
I currently live in Stevenson Ranch, California. Thank you very much. As Mr. Lynn presented, you know, the One Baxter Way building is a 350,000 square foot multi-tenant building, and for many years, it was a single tenant facility. And one of the things that we, as the, the current ownership, are trying to do is to showcase that this is now a multi-tenant building and are trying to attract tenants to this building. And we have been successful in pulling tenants from other markets such as State Farm, which we've pulled from Westlake Village into Thousand Oaks. And as everybody probably knows, with the economy, it's a very competitive environment out there, and the tenants do require the buildings to have identity signage and to know that it's not just a single property facility. The, the sign that we're asking for, for, on the freeway sign, is just really meant to accommodate both the Baxter as well as the State Farm tenants, because there are two largest tenants in the building. The one on Lakeview and Thousand Oaks Boulevard is just also showcase the other tenants that are in the facility. We're going to be having to backfill some of the space in the property because our, one of our tenants, Verizon, is going to be vacating at some point here in the, in the near future. So, we need every advantage that we can in order to attract tenants from markets such as Calabasas, Westlake Village, Camarillo, and even as far west and east as West Hills. So, any competitive advantage we need, we've got to step up to it. Are there any questions that anybody has?
Do we have any questions of the speaker? We don't. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have not received any public speaker or comment cards. I just want to check with the Recording Secretary just one last time. Okay? We have not. So, we'll go back to city staff for any comments.
Staff has no further comment.
Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to reiterate something that Mr. Lynn mentioned, and it is Condition Number 7 in your packet on page 10. This case before you tonight involves detailed designs for certain signs at the Baxter property, and it also includes a conceptual sign for the new city gateway sign on the east end of town. Condition Number 7 in your packet requires the applicant to submit more detailed sign designs for that gateway sign. So, part of, of this case before you tonight is really to, as far as conceptual review goes, to solicit any comments from the Commission on the city gateway sign, which is more conceptual in nature. Right now, as Ms. Lynn mentioned, it is 40 feet wide by a maximum of 10 feet tall, and hopefully, everybody was able to go out and see the mock-up in the field. So, staff welcomes any comments on the conceptual size of the gateway sign in particular, the location, and the concept, conceptual design itself that's contained in your, in your packet. But that detailed design still needs to be submitted to staff and reviewed and approved by the city.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Towne? Commissioner Adam?
Actually, I do have one question, just for clarification, and the applicant's paying for the sign. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. The applicant has agreed voluntarily to pay for the installation of the gateway sign.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds?
And the mock-up that I drove by is the exact size and shape that the sign would be? Or just...
That is correct. It was, it was built to scale, so if there are any comments on that, please, now is the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Okay. If not, we'll go back to our applicant, Mr. Prabhu. Do you have any additional comments you'd like to make?
No.
Okay. If not, we will go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll open it up for Commission discussion and/or motion. Commissioner Reynolds?
Thank you. I really think that it's important that we help our businesses, and so I think that by changing the Baxter sign and putting another tenant on it is an important thing for the building, and this is a very famous building, not only with the awards it received when it was first built, but I know the Six Million Dollar Man was even filmed there. They used to film a lot of different things. It's been used in a lot of different things. Plus, they also have a nice community meeting room that I know there are silver groups that are allowed to meet there, too. So, with that, I will move approval of S U M J 2009-703-55, the O T M N slash landmark tree permit 2010-70050, with the findings and conditions in the packet. And I'm very glad to see the city gateway sign. I knew that the original smaller ones were designed by a planning commissioner, someone who was on the Planning Commission for a brief time, and I'm very pleased to see that our city will be recognized with that sign. Everyone sees the Westlake sign that's been there. I don't know, I've lived here 38 years, so I don't know how many years it's been here, but it's nice that there's going to be a City of Thousand Oaks sign there, and I thank you for that.
Okay. Are there comments to the motion? Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I will support the motion. I think it's a reasonable request, especially with the size of the property it fits in with the surrounding areas, and the design of the signs are fantastic. So, I will be supporting it, and I actually had to think back for a minute with Commissioner Reynolds, Six Million Dollar Man. I don't know if I remember that one, but...
I'm older than you. I guess I remember.
Commissioner Adam?
Yes, thank you. Well, it's a big building. It's imperative that we get some tenants in there, and so, I agree with you that I think the sign couldn't hurt, as they say, and it's nice of you to step up and put up a monument sign for the city. I've often, I've driven up that many, many times. I often thought to myself, this would be a good spot for a monument sign for the city, and now we're going to get one. So, but make, leave the Westlake sign, though. That's a, that's a landmark. It's been there for years. So, I will support the motion as well.
Okay. Any final comments, Commissioner Reynolds? If not, could we vote, please?
Motion passed, 4-0.
Okay. There is an appeal process. Any aggrieved party who wishes to appeal the Planning Commission's decision may do so by filing an appeal with the Community Development Department within 10 days. Will the Secretary please call case 6B?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 6B regarding case LU 2008-703-02, Z 2008-703-01, S U M J 2008-707-06, D P 2008-707-07, O T P 2008-707-05, Los Robles Hospital. Case and applicant, MCA 2009-70079, City of Thousand Oaks. Request: To allow expansion of the hospital, including a new fourth floor to the existing three-story building, and construction of a new multi-level patient care wing at 215 West Janes Road. To allow construction of a multi-story above-grade parking structure on a 2.14 acre lot at the northeast corner of Lynn Road, Janes, and Janes Road. And allow a change of zoning from commercial to institutional, and change in zoning from commercial office to public, quasi-public, and institutional lands and facilities for same lot. To amend the parking standard for hospitals to a requirement based on parking demand. And to allow removal of one oak tree, transplant of one oak tree, and three oak tree encroachments. Location: 215 West Janes Road and the northeast corner of Lynn Road, Janes Road. APN 522-0270-135.
Mr. Towne, I wondered if, before we, we listened to the entire presentation, if you could kind of give some clarity tonight on this particular case and what the Planning Commission's purview is?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just for clarification for those present and, and other members of the public watching at home, this case involves a number of what we call our entitlements, as well as several legislative actions. And the purview of the Planning Commission in this process tonight is to provide a recommendation on those proposed entitlements and legislative actions. That recommendation is then forwarded on to the City Council, who will consider those at a subsequent meeting of the Council. Essentially, the difference between these two is that legislative actions, which in this particular case include a proposed general plan land use amendment, a zone change, and a municipal code amendment, are essentially policy issues that are within the purview of the City Council. Entitlements such as special use permits, development permits, those are the types of cases that implement city policy and are within the purview of the Commission. So, what you have is a mixture of those two types of cases, and in these, these types of proposals, the Commission considers all the facts, and then will provide a recommendation, which is then sent on to the City Council. For the City Council meeting, there will be the same notification that went out in terms of radius mailings, et cetera, so there will be full notice at that point in time as well. But just to be clear, this, these cases with regard to Los Robles Hospital, that is case 6B on the agenda tonight, is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Towne. This evening, the staff report will be given by Ms. Lori Young from the Community Development Department. If I might also ask Ms. Young, if you could introduce the others that are here with you tonight?
Good evening, Chair Grimney and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Lori Young. I'm the project planner, and with me tonight, we have Claudia Pedrosso, who worked on the municipal code amendment, and Rick Burgess, who is our environmental planner.
Thank you. If you could present the report, please.
Yes. This project involves six applications, two different sites, three different buildings, five phases over eight years, and numerous bed, bed movement, which can be quite confusing. So, I'll do my best to try to explain this in a simple way for you. We have an outline that I'd like to go over so that you'll know what the presentation, how it's going to go. We're gonna talk about why the applicant is requesting this, what are the different components of the project, the proposed construction phasing, the request by staff to update the hospital requirements, parking requirements, the environmental review, and There are two reasons for the request. The first one is to meet the state Senate Bill nineteen fifty-three, which mandates that hospitals must move critical essential services from non-compliant buildings into compliant areas. And then, second, the hospital would like to expand the number of beds that were approved from two seventy-seven, and add sixty new beds, for a total of three hundred and thirty-seven This is an aerial view of the site. You can see here, the outline is the hospital campus. Here's Janes Road, Young Avenue, Sidley to the north, and Lynn Road to the east. This is referred to as Project Site A. And this is the other lot the hospital owns, which is on the northeast corner Lynn and Janes. The request is first to add a fourth floor to the three-story building wing, which is right here. This is the original hospital building. The next thing is to, well, on the same site, is the addition of the four-story patient care wing. And to accommodate the demand for parking, the applicant is requesting to construct a new parking structure. And this is the outline here. These are the medical office buildings that were referred to in the staff report. And this is the existing parking structure, and the main entrance to the hospital is right here. This shows a site plan and the building footprint of the project. I don't know if you can see it very well, but this is where the fourth story is gonna go. This is the proposed new wing. And this is the proposed parking structure site. Fourth floor addition will be thirty-eight thousand square feet, but they're only gonna be doing the shell space only. This is the main entrance to the hospital, and the fourth floor will be put right on top of the existing hospital. The materials and design and everything's gonna match exactly, so you won't notice that it's new. The applicant's requesting a waiver, the thirty-five-foot height limit. The proposed fourth floor will be fifty-nine feet six inches, and with the equipment screen, it'll be sixty-eight feet, which will still be lower overall than the existing building, which is seventy-eight feet six inches. It's a little bit hard to see, but this would be the fourth floor, and then the roof equipment screen. This is the north side, west, south. And so that, this is the fourth floor addition. The new patient wing is approximately one hundred and eighty-nine thousand square feet. It is four floors above grade and one floor partially below grade. The patient wing will also be fifty-nine feet six inches, and with the equipment, approximately sixty-five feet, which is still below the existing hospital and three-story building The applicant, the design of the building matches the existing in materials, design, and finishes, so that it will look like the original part of the building. It is gonna be connected to the existing building wing, and will be set back from the nearest property line, hundred-and-eight feet, and to the closest house, about two-hundred feet. And this is what it will look like looking southwest. So it has articulation. These are recessed in throughout here. The materials, the same stone. The window pattern will be similar, and also the use of metal. This is looking east. This is an existing view of what it looks like now from Sidley Street. This is with the fourth floor expansion. And this is with the four-story patient wing.
If I could ask everyone to just refrain from comments so that we can make sure that everyone can hear the staff report, please?
So an important part of evaluating this project was looking at parking demand, and how much parking would be needed for these additions. And a new parking study was done, looking at peak parking demand, and it was determined it was three-point-nine spaces per bed, which was over the parking study that was done in two thousand and two for the last expansion. And it's four percent over. For three hundred and thirty-seven beds, there would be a requirement of one thousand one hundred and seventy-six spaces. We also need to factor in the original building. When those critical services are moved out of the original hospital building into the new compliant areas, we needed to assume that that area was gonna be used. And the applicant does not know exactly how they're gonna use it, so we did a conservative evaluation, looking at considering the area, which is about thirty-eight thousand square feet. Fifty percent would be used for storage, and fifty percent for like, general office, ancillary to the hospital operations. That would require eighty-five spaces. And then we include the four percent buffer, which is a parking reserve, and that totals one thousand three hundred and twelve spaces needed. For parking supply and to meet the new parking demand, we have a new parking structure being proposed at the corner Lynn and Janes, and this will hold six hundred and fifty-nine spaces. We have the existing parking structure that provides five hundred and thirteen spaces. We have a hundred and twenty-seven spaces in surface parking, and thirteen spaces for drop-off valet parking, where you can drop your car off. And this provides a total of one thousand three hundred and twelve spaces. On Project Site B, which is where the parking structure's being proposed, it's a two hundred and fifty-six thousand square foot parking structure. It will consist of six levels, two levels below grade, one level at grade, and three levels above grade. It's designed to match exactly the existing parking structure in materials and designs A height waiver is also being requested. The average height of this building is thirty-six feet. The highest point are at the elevator and stairwell design elements, and that is forty-seven feet six inches on the east and north side, so they're not right out in front in the most visible area along Lynn and Janes. We also need to mention about a waiver for the building coverage. The P L zone requires a maximum of twenty-five percent building coverage unless waived by the planning commission. And for this project, a fifty-five percent building coverage is being proposed. The site is two acres in size, and the parking structure guidelines require a minimum five acres for parking structures. The existing landscaping along Janes and Lynn Roads are being preserved, and additional trees and shrubs are being conditioned to fill in gaps where the trees are missing. The parking structure is being set back seventy-five feet to ninety feet from Lynn Road, and ninety feet to a hundred feet from Janes Road. The birmingham along Janes is designed so that it reduces the visible exposed structure height. The building has been designed so that the two lower levels, although it encroaches within the building setback, will not be visible because of the existing mature landscaping that surrounds the structure. The rooftop will not be lit. There's a condition that prohibits lighting on the roof. And there's a requirement that the applicant use motion sensor lighting to minimize additional light sources. An oak tree permit is also being requested in order to remove one oak tree, to transplant one oak tree, and to encroach within the protective zones of three oak trees. This project, on the parking structure project, it is currently, the land use is commercial, and the zoning is C O, which is commercial office. The applicant is requesting that the land use be changed to institutional, to match what exists on the hospital site, and to change the zoning accordingly to P L. So we have a development permit, a land use amendment, zone change, and oak tree permit for this site. This is a view looking at the parking structure from Janes Road without any landscaping. This is a view looking west at the parking structure at that main medical office driveway, just east of Janes. This is looking west from Janes Road with landscaping added. This is looking north without the landscaping. And you can see here that these are the two lower levels of the parking structure, which encroach within the setback, and will be hidden by all the trees that are existing This is looking north at the structure with the landscaping, and you can see here the outline of the proposed parking structure. This shows the proposed building without landscaping from Janes Road, and you could see it here with additional landscaping. And this is looking southeast from Lynn Road. And looking at it with the existing landscaping. The applicant is proposing a five-phase construction project. Phase A one will be the addition of the fourth floor, thirty-eight thousand square feet, shell space only. Phase two will build out most of the wing with the new fourth floor, and also either build a two-story addition of the patient wing or the four-story wing, and only build out the first and second levels, and the third and fourth levels will be left as shell space. Phases one and two are required to meet the state seismic requirements, and this needs to be completed before January first, two thousand and thirteen. Phase three will consist of building out the remaining fourth floor shell space. Phase four will be construction of the parking structure. And phase five will either add on the third and fourth floors to the two-story addition, or to build out the shell space in the four-story building. Phases three to five will be from, construction will be from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and eighteen. So from initial construction, from the beginning to the end, will consist of eight years. And during construction, there's gonna be a shortage of parking due to the construction workers and the construction staging areas. So the applicant has a temporary parking agreement with the Cano Recreation Park District to use five hundred spaces at the soccer fields, Cano Creek South parking lot, which is just east of the twenty-three freeway. And now I'd like to give this over to Ms. Pedrosso, so she can talk about the code amendment.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm gonna speak now in regards to the municipal code amendment. The amendment, the city's actually requesting this amendment to kind of clean up and update the parking requirements for hospitals. The original parking requirements were set back in nineteen seventy, and required one-point-seven-five parking spaces per bed, and then it was updated to one-point-eight-five parking spaces per bed in nineteen eighty-four. Well, from the last, you know, twenty-something years, there's a lot that has changed in the hospitals, from special services and testing and so on and so forth, where we feel that the actual parking of one-point-eight-five parking spaces per bed is not adequate. In fact, the last few hospital expansions, we have requested to have the applicant provide parking demand analysis. And staff feels that this is actually a good, an accurate method of figuring out parking, because it actually measures the existing demand, and also protects the future demand based on whatever services or beds, or whatever the addition or expansion of the hospital may be. So in March of two thousand and nine, the city council initiated the code amendment, and also authorized for this amendment to be processed concurrently with the hospital entitlements. Staff did research of a hundred and forty cities and counties, and we found numerous methodologies, and we actually narrowed them to seven different methodologies. And they're very different. Some of them included just beds, parking spaces per bed. Some of them included parking spaces per bed plus square footage. Some of them included full-time employees plus beds. Some of them included maximum shift of employees plus square footage, square footage alone, all kinds of combinations, and all kinds of different outcomes. What we did find out is that the majority of the cities and counties that we researched is that fifty-two percent actually used the parking spaces per bed nomenclature. And we have this graph kind of defines our findings. And... And the larger piece of the pie is the parking spaces per bed. And we have the second largest one is parking spaces plus largest employee shift. And the rest are variations of combinations. And the 6% of the cities and counties we researched, we found that they actually use a parking study, that they require parking study when they do hospital expansions. Okay. Although most of the cities look like they use the spaces, parking spaces per bed, staff feels like the parking demand analysis is probably the most accurate one to use. For example, based on the current parking analysis, we found that the demand is basically at 3.49 spaces per bed, which is basically twice as much as what our current code requires. Right now, our code requires 1.85. In addition to that, we added a 4% buffer, which is what is being recommended by the parking demand analysis that we have right now, for a total of 3.63 spaces per bed. And in your staff report, you'll find numbers of tables, some of them are background information, but also the one that follows the pie chart, that kind of shows that our requirement of 3.63 spaces per bed is actually the second highest within the 74 cities that were surveyed. And 72 cities have a lower ratio. So basically, what we're finding is that over parking, demand analysis gives us a better forecast of what the parking demand will be, even including with the 4% buffer, still larger than what our code requires right now. The other advantage also of using a parking demand analysis versus just spaces per bed is that sometimes the hospital will have expansions that will not include beds. For example, it would include an expansion of the cardiology unit or emergency room like it has happened in the past. And if we don't have a way of measuring that, then we may be losing for additional parking that may be required. So based on the analysis that we have had, and like I said, we have in your staff report different attachments with different of the information that we tabled, so you can see where all the different cities are doing. But based on the information that we did and based on our past experiences with the hospital expansion, is that we recommend that, to amend the code to require a parking demand analysis with any hospital use expansion or any building expansion that could be expressed in two ways. One, in beds for, spaces per bed, if we have a project that only adds beds or it's a hybrid where it requires bed and square footage. And when we have a project that only expands the building or the use, that we can use the parking demand analysis to express that in a space per square foot basis. And at this time, I'm going to pass it back to Ms. Young so she can continue talking about
A few years ago, there was a proposal, let me see if I can find it, from the property owner, I can't find it, that owns property between the hospital site and the parking structure. It was proposal for additional office space and new parking structure. And this was denied by the City Council in 2008. One of the concerns expressed during this time was the need to look at the entire area, all the medical offices, and how the hospital in relates with the medical offices, looking at the circulation, parking, traffic, pedestrian circulation. And we have included now a condition that requests that the hospital work with the adjacent property owners, and there's about six other owners involved, that would consider a master plan of this entire hospital and medical office building sort of campus. And they would look at land use, parking, circulation, density. So a condition has been included. The draft and final EIR evaluated aesthetics, air quality, biology, geology, grading, et cetera, and found that the project would not create any significant environmental impacts after the imposition of mitigation measures and conditions of approval in the project. Staff is recommending, that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council certify FEIR 328 and adopt the mitigation monitoring program and approve the special use, major modification, the general plan land use amendment, the zone change, the development permit, oak tree permit, and municipal code amendment. And this is based upon the findings and conditions contained in the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Questions of staff? Commissioner Adams.
Thank you. Well, this is a big project and it affects a lot of people. And so I do have some questions. I beg the indulgence of my fellow commissioners. And if the applicant would take note of the questions that I'm asking, perhaps they may want to address them as well when it's their turn at the podium. Okay. Hi, Ms. Young. How are you? The first thing I want to talk to you about is kind of a conceptual thing as far as the seismic versus the non-seismic nature of this project. Most of the people in the audience know, as of 2013, the hospital has to comply with seismic requirements. There can't be any patients in the old building anymore. It's not seismically fit for that, so they have to be moved. The hospital is permitted for 277 beds, so that none of those beds can be in the old wing anymore. However, what's being proposed is tonight has a seismic requirement and a non-seismic requirement. The seismic requirement, as I understand it, would be to build out of the fourth floor on the existing building, three floors on the new wing, less 22 beds, and then the 30 emergency room beds. That would give us the 277 beds needed by permit to satisfy the seismic requirements.
Yes.
Okay. The non-seismic requirements, this is the optional part for the future expansion, would be 22 more beds on the third floor of the proposed addition, plus the fourth floor of the new wing, which would be another 38 beds. So that's 60 extra beds proposed, but not needed, not seismically speaking. I think I have that right. So the, okay, so the question is this, it's kind of a theoretical question. If that, if the fourth floor on the proposed addition were not built, that would eliminate 38 beds. By my calculations of this 3.49 space per bed that you're using, that would also, and just tell me if I'm right, that would also mean we'd need less of a parking structure. Is that correct?
Yes. If the applicant did not go ahead and expand the 60 additional beds, 60 additional beds times 3.49, which is the rate, plus the buffer, would require 217 spaces.
Correct, yes.
And the proposed parking structure has 215 spaces on the third and fourth floors. So essentially, you could take two floors off the proposed parking structure if you did not build.
Okay.
Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, two of those floors would be underground. So...
Well, right, well, that's a good point. It could mean that you wouldn't have two floors underground and you just put the rest on top. But I'm just trying to differentiate between the two concepts here, seismic versus non-seismic. You know, for the proposed growth that the hospital's putting in front of us, it's requiring a larger parking structure than would be needed seismically. Okay, thank you. Let me just ask some more specific questions about the project itself. Well, here's a quick one for Mr. Ennis. Hi, Mr. Ennis. The oak tree, number three, you're recommending we not transplant it because of the condition, because it's a D? Is that why? Because, I mean, it would seem to me this project is crying out for trees. So why don't we try to save that tree?
That's correct. Oak tree number three, it's a small tree and it's very poor condition.
Yeah, I've seen it.
So for both of those reasons, it's not a good candidate for transplanting. It'd be much better if there's any concern over that tree to replace with a tree that same size, which basically the new landscaping is going to do. It probably would not survive transplanting.
Well, we could never replace it with a tree that size.
Number three, sure, absolutely. Number three's not a huge tree.
Well, I was there, it's going to be at least 25 feet, isn't it?
Yeah. It's not a problem.
Hmm, okay, all right. Anyway, like I said, the project's crying out for trees, so it would just seem to me that we want to do everything we can to save every tree there. Okay, I'll try to move along here. This is about, this question's about the phasing, you know, A1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. You know, how do you do this phasing, presuming that, you know, this is approved tonight? How do you do the phasing that would have the least impact on the community around it? A2. They're talking about, you know, either they would build two stories and add the 3 and 4 later in A5, or build all four stories in A2. Wouldn't it be less impactful on the community just if this thing gets approved to build all four stories in A2 rather than come back three or four years later with the cranes and everything else and add three or four stories on, or three, yeah, two more stories on in A5?
Yes, it would be preferable for, to put, to construct all four floors and leave the top three and fourth floor as shell space.
All in A2, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's what I, that would be my opinion as well. I was at the site, of course, and this has to do about pedestrian safety. And it might have to do with the, what was it, you know, the overall plan for the complex. But when we build the parking garage, we're asking the employees to get out of the garage and either take the shuttle, which is, which would be fine, or to walk to the hospital. And they can walk one of two ways. They can hang a right and go up Jan's Road into the hospital, or they can cut through the parking lot to the left of 227, go up the stairs and into the hospital. And I don't know if you've looked at this or not, but this is maybe more of a statement than a question, but I think we've got to be really careful here about pedestrian safety. I was out at the site. If you hang a right and go up Jan's Road, those cars are pulling out of there, don't stop. They go right through there because it's hard to see. We've got to put up some kind of a crosswalk there or something for pedestrian safety. And then the other part, and maybe this would be the question, have you considered this? For the folks that decide, well, I want to go take the short way and go to the stairs, they have to cross that driveway, which is almost like a street, really, with a lot of traffic in the morning and the evening. They have to cross there with no crosswalk, and then there's no sidewalk on the other side. They have to walk along the street and then hang a right to go up the steps. So there needs, would you agree there needs to be some sort of a sidewalk there for safety purposes, or else we're going to have people walking down, literally down the side of the street?
Yes, I agree with you. The pedestrian circulation is not good there. These were, this was one of the things that we had looked at with the previous project, was to add a sidewalk to get, to go in a more safe manner to get to the hospital, because there's a lot of pedestrian crossover. And this is something that we're hoping that we can resolve with the master plan.
Has, I think it's owned by Dr. Turquet, isn't it, that property? Has he been approached at all as far as his willingness to?
Yes.
And what did he say?
He was willing to talk about it with the applicant.
Okay, all right. I'd just like, I'd like to make a note of that and maybe potentially include it in one of the conditions or that it at least be looked at, because I'm convinced that if nothing's done there, we've got a major liability on our hands.
We do have a condition about the master plan.
Yes, I know.
And I believe it references pedestrian circulation.
It does, but it isn't specific about these two issues. You know, we're asking employees to park in a remote parking lot, and they have to take quite a hike to get to the hospital. We've got to make sure they can get there safely. Just a couple more questions. On the, I know you don't want any lights on the parking structure at night. How are you going to work that? I mean, if people park there during the day and then it's, you know, they don't leave till late, nine o'clock at night, they're still up there, they've got to turn their lights on and drive down. Not to mention, you know, daylight savings time, regular time, how are you going to make sure that there's no lights up there?
The, as I understand it, and probably the applicant will be the best one to answer this, but they operate on two shifts, two 12-hour shifts. So after the first shift, someone could go and close the top floor so that no one parks up there. The other thing is that at night, there's probably going to be a lot more parking available in the existing parking structure because there will be less staff, doctors parking at the main hospital.
Okay. All right, I'll get the applicant's reaction to that as well. This is about traffic, which, you know, is definitely a concern in that area. One thing I know that we're talking about is no left-hand turn as we come out of the driveway, prohibition of left-hand turn there. Let me just ask something else. We have a deficiency plan for Lynn Road and Jan's Road whereby the level service drops to, I believe, a C. So we're going to require that the applicant put in a left-turn lane, two-through lanes, and a right-turn lane, which, yeah, oh, here we are.
We're having traffic coming in.
Ms. Baden, yes, okay, okay, good. Hi, Ms. Baden.
Hi, good evening.
How are you doing? Well, the, yeah, talking about the deficiency plan for Lynn and Jan's, and I understand that with this new striping, and that would seem to, I don't know if it's going to cure it, but at least if we keep it at a level C. How about the other intersections like Camino dos Rios and Camino Manzanos that are going to drop to D and E? I mean, I know the long, I guess from my reading, the long-range plan is that you put in this third southbound lane to ultimately solve that problem. That's nothing that the applicant would be required to do, correct?
That's right. The original general plan for the city had a six-lane section on Lynn Road. And back in 1997, the circulation element was amended to reduce the cross-section of the road from six lanes to four from Gainesboro, Dos Rios, I believe up to Arbolas was the section that was revised. The traffic study for this project is looking at cumulative conditions for Lynn Road and discussing what the level of service would be built out of the city, built out of all of the existing projects and built out of the existing zoning. So we're showing that the level of service is going to be less than the city's level of service C standard and suggesting that the deficiency plan would be to go back to the six-lane section. That would require a circulation element amendment and would require that the city go back in and revise the road to go back to six lanes.
So do we tie that deficiency directly to the hospital?
No, it's actually, it's not. No, it's actually, it's not a project impact. You know, the project does contribute to some of the growth at those intersections, but the project impact is not meet the city's criteria for a significant impact. Therefore, the project would not be triggering the need for that type of improvement. And I'm expecting that, you know, as the city grows and the projects that have been identified in other areas of the city come online and traffic grows on Lynn Road, the future city council would reconsider levels of service on the road, see how it's growing, how it's affecting the community, and make that decision at a future date.
Hmm. How about level, how about levels of service at Jan's and Young and Lynn and Sidley?
Both of those intersections are uncontrolled.
Yeah, I know.
Levels of service are expected to stay in the A and B range, which is, which is quite good. The, the project does have--
If I could just pause just for a moment. Please, if we could have no comments, there'll be an opportunity for you to come and make a statement at the public comment portion, but we do need to make sure that staff can be heard by everyone and by the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Grumman. I thought Jan's and Young and Lynn and Sidley were gonna drop to C.
Still, that's within the city's acceptable level of service range. The project does have a significant impact at the intersection of Jan's and Lynn in the cumulative plus project condition, and as you mentioned a little bit earlier, there is a mitigation measure identified where the city will be doing future improvements to that intersection, not just to add a lane, which would be the mitigation that's identified by the study to mitigate the project impacts, but also to add bike lane on Lynn Road. The city has a bike lane study that's underway, and at a future date, both of these improvements would be designed into the Lynn and Jan's intersection. The project, there's a condition of approval, that's before you tonight, to request that the project contribute monetarily towards that future city project to add a third northbound through lane, I'm sorry, not a third northbound through lane, to add a second northbound through lane at Lynn and Jan's, and also to participate in getting the bike lane improvements at that intersection.
Okay. Let me just ask you about the internal circulation of the property itself. So, we're not gonna allow a left turn anymore coming out of the driveway? That would be prohibited, correct?
That's kind of a phased change. The intent is that, short-term, that the city would work with the property owner, which is the owner of the medical office complex, to correct an existing deficiency that we have with site distance that's caused by some of the landscaping at the intersection. But there's a condition in the packet this evening that asks that for, prior to the parking structure going in, which is Phase 3 of the, actually, I think it's Phase 4, if I've got that right.
Phase 4, yeah.
Phase 4, when the parking structure goes in, that if the improvements are not completed out there and the site distance is still lacking, that the hospital would construct improvements within the public right-of-way to restrict left-turn access at that intersection. So, you would be able to make all of the movements that you can make today, but left-turn out would be prohibited. The traffic study also looks at redistributing those trips to the other driveways and what the impacts would be, but basically, the other driveways would have the capacity required to accommodate that redistribution of traffic.
Well, yeah, okay, the no-left turn does seem to be the way we're heading, and it is problematic there to make a left turn, because there is site distance problems and the like. But what comes to mind, okay, so, if you don't make a left turn there, then you might be making a left turn at Medical Center Drive.
That's right.
Okay, so, do we need a light there? If that's the case?
That is an option. Excuse me. Currently, there are three driveways to the complex, none of them are signalized. The two driveways on Jan's Road are full access. The driveway on Lynn Road is right-in, right-out only because of the raised median on Lynn Road. The traffic study did look at opening the median on Lynn and installing a signal, and looked at redistributing the trips and levels of service if that option was pursued. The signal is not required. The site would work just fine without that change. We also looked at, would a signal be beneficial at the intersection of Jan's and Medical Center Drive, which is the driveway further east?
That's what I'm talking about.
On Jan's, right.
Jan's and Medical Center Drive.
And it's borderline as far as meeting the warrants at that intersection, but it's close enough that if that was considered beneficial, that could help circulation as well.
Okay. Well, you know, it's just for every action, there's an equal opposite reaction. So, you prohibit left-hand turns coming out of the driveway, so then you move people up to Medical Center Drive, and the left-hand turn there isn't all that much better than, you know, the driveway. So, then you may need a light. Plus, I'm concerned about routing traffic back through the neighborhoods. I'm afraid that people are gonna come back out, they can't make the left, so they make the right on Jan's, then they make a right on Lynn, and they make a right on Sidley, for example, and then a right on Young to get back to Jan's again. Next thing you know, we have traffic going down Sidley. So, at the very least, we need to consider either a light there, or even more so, some sort of a sign situation internally that directs people around the, if they can't make the left, directs them back and around and out to Medical Center Drive and not out into the neighborhoods.
Well, a couple of things. If, drivers tend to go out the same way that they came in.
Exactly.
And unless somebody is really familiar with the neighborhood and how the streets are laid out, unless they really are neighbors, they're not gonna know that you can get through some of these side streets. So, it's expected that the cars that come in would go out the main driveways. They would find their way back through the complex, and if the left turn is restricted at a medical office driveway, that they would reroute themselves back out to the intersection at Medical Center Drive. If a signal was to be installed there, it is an expense to the hospital that currently isn't anticipated. It would be about $350,000 for them to install a signal at a driveway. That hasn't been part of the project at this point.
Okay. Well, I think you're right. I mean, people tend to go back out the way they came in, and with this plan with no left, they're gonna go back out, find out they can't make a left, and they're gonna make a right on Lynn, and to get back to the 23, for example, they could very well be driving down Sidley, and I want to keep the traffic out of that neighborhood. So, we'll leave it at that, but it just seems to me we're gonna, you know, if this thing goes tonight, we're gonna need some sort of a light or some signage internally to get people back to Medical Center Drive and out versus driving through the neighborhoods. Okay, I know, I apologize for everybody for taking up some extra time here, but I just, just one more quick one. This is, well, this is more maybe of an opinion, I could get your opinion. You know, that the North View there of the new four-story addition that's proposed? You know, when you're standing on Sidley and looking at it, for example, or you're up there in the parking lot? Is that, is that my imagination? I know it's supposed to look articulated, but it looks mass to me. The new wing, the proposed new wing. And, you know, there's no set answer to this, I guess it's more of an opinion.
Well, if you look at the second floor, these are recessed in, so that--
Yeah, there it is, yeah.
You see this?
Mm-hmm.
And then this follows how the existing backside is.
Go to the next slide, the West View. I apologize for asking you a question without an answer, but it just looks, it looks like it has a massing effect to it, and not maybe as articulated as it could be. But anyway, thank you. Just one quick, one more thing, and I'm done, okay? What about green building? Has there been any talk about LEED certification? I mean, we're talking about putting up a four-story building here, and a lot of the applicants come before us with green building propositions and--
Yes, I'd like--
I haven't heard anything about that.
To have our architect talk about the green bill.
Okay, from the applicant, right?
Staff.
Oh, okay. Right.
Good morning, Mr. Adam. I'm sure the applicant can expand on their green efforts, but basically, the new green building code, the CalGreen that is gonna be coming into effect, is gonna equal, if not supersede, LEED, and also, they're gonna be regulated by ALSPAD, which is that state requirement right there, so they're gonna have to comply. But I'm sure their architect for the hospital can expand on their pursuing of LEED or not.
Yeah, that's true. CalGreen goes into effect January 1st, 2011, and that's--
It's very, very, it's put LEED to a higher standard.
Yeah, it's at least LEED certified.
Well, it could be at least certifiable, but I don't know if they're gonna pursue at least certification or not.
Okay, we'll let, we'll let them talk about that. Anyway, thank you, fellow commissioners.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Commissioner Adam. I went check, check, check. So, I've got one question on the construction parking impacts. Has a parking management plan been developed yet?
A conceptual plan has been provided by the applicant, but as we get closer, they're gonna be required to provide a more detailed plan when all aspects of the construction is known. We have a general plan that tells us how much we need roughly, and the amount of spaces that they will be getting from the park district will more than provide enough parking.
Okay. Second question, from start to finish for this plan, how long are we looking?
From Phase A1 to A5, we're looking at eight years. And then, to comply with the seismic safety regulations, that would be two years, ending December 2012.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reynolds, do you have any questions?
I just have a couple of questions. If this seismic fitting is not done, will the hospital have to be closed, then?
I will let the applicant answer that question.
And my other question is on the grading on staff, page 38, and this is something I always ask about. The requirement of 5,754 truck trips, and that's ordered to, needed to remove the soil. So, that means to the site and away from the site, there'll be a total of, what, 11,508 truck trips?
Yes, if you look at the circulation, it would be.
But I know they have to submit a plan and everything, and we're lucky that they're close to the freeway. I'm just assuming they use that route, but it's really up to the excavation company.
That will be developed by the Department of Public Works, but it's important also to note that the grading will be done at different times, and consequently, it won't all be happening at the same time.
Okay. And by what, state law, they must, those trucks must be covered?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I have one additional question, and thank you, Commissioner Adams, for doing such a thorough job, so I have one question. In the diagram that you have, you show the parking structure with additional trees. What is the proposed size that would go in, and how long would it take for those trees to grow to the size that's in the example?
I'd like Mr. Ennis or landscape architect to answer that question.
Thank you.
The main part of the mass that you see in the, in those illustrations is really from the existing trees. In fact, if you look closely at the existing vegetation picture and the proposed vegetation picture, and you can see that the trees that are now existing, they actually did not change those in size on the, on the second picture. So, if we were to look at those trees that are going to be planted to infill those spaces, it would take probably five to 10 years to get to the size that is shown on the proposed landscaping, but that's actually not gonna happen, because the picture's gonna be slightly different in that, in that the existing trees will actually be the main trees to fill in, basically, as they're doing now. And that's why preserving all of those trees along Lynn and Jan's were so important to us.
So, what is the size that's going to go in initially?
The size of the trees?
Of the new, the new trees that are going to go in.
They vary from a 24-inch box to 60-inch box.
Terrific, thank you. That was my only question. Oh, Mr. Ennis, Commissioner Adam has one additional question for you.
Hi, Mr. Ennis. What's in you there on tree number three?
Yes.
How about that? So, I would estimate that's about a 25-foot tree, would you say?
Sure.
About right? So, a 60, you're telling me we can get a 60-inch box and have a 25-foot tree in it?
It would be a bigger box than that.
It would have to be bigger than that.
You could replace it with that-sized tree, and that's what they would have to commit to if we made them transplant it, because our standard conditions for transplanting is that if the tree does not survive, then you have to replace it with an equal-sized tree, which you can do on that-sized tree. But, that's a D-rated tree. We never recommend transplanting a tree with anything less than a C. I mean, a C is marginal, because transplanting any tree is stressful on the tree. So, you need to start with a vigorous tree to go through that process. That's why we're not, they haven't suggested, and we're certainly not recommending transplanting that tree. It's just not a nice enough tree. It's not a native tree, it's not even a native species.
Yeah, it's an Ilex, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So, it's D in appearance, is it D in health, too?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Mr. Ennis.
Okay, now is time we'll go to the applicant. I'd first like to ask the applicant if they'd like a couple of moments to be able to set up their visual aids that they brought with them. We just knew that you did not have an opportunity to set them up prior to the meeting, so we wanted to give you that time, if you'd like, to go ahead and set them up.
Video monitoring also.
I believe we also had an easel that came down that could be used. Oh, I'd like to go ahead and make a recommendation that we go ahead and take a five-to-seven-minute break so that the applicant can set up, and then we will resume at 8:07.
break so that the applicant can set up, and then we will resume at 8:07. And this portion, we're now going to be going to the applicant. The applicant this evening is being represented by Mr. Greg Engel. And Mr. Engel, if I could ask you if you could state your name and city of residence for the public record, and then I have one question for you.
Greg Engel, CEO of Los Robles, Westlake Village.
Welcome, Mr. Engel. I also have several speaker cards. If you could just go ahead and address for us who those individuals are, whether they're available, they're going to be making a presentation, or whether they're going to be available for questions.
Yes, I have with me Associate Principal Russ Triplet from Perkins &amp; Will, who will be assisting me in answering questions. And he also has other consultants who are on the project from GeoBase and Kim Lee Horn. They will be assisting in the presentation.
Okay, and you can go ahead and go forward with your presentation.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, Commissioners and staff, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this very, very important project to the City of Thousand Oaks. The project proposal is to construct a fourth-floor addition to the existing wing, a new patient wing, build out the existing space, and then add a parking garage. What's driving this project is Senate Bill 1953, which was signed into law in 1994. It's effective on March 18th, 1998. And essentially, what it requires us is for general acute care hospital buildings to remain capable of caring for patients leading up to and immediately following a seismic event. Unfortunately, our original building was constructed in 1968, which is before the 1973 code requirement, and therefore no longer meets the seismic regulation. And all essential services must be moved out in order for us to remain compliant. And some of those services include our maternity unit, including neonatal intensive care and pediatrics, medical surgical beds and monitored beds, or telemetry beds, our operating rooms and recovery room, radiology services, pharmacy services, dietary and nutrition services. So why is this important to the community? Well, it allows us to continue to provide the high-quality healthcare services- Well, it allows us to continue to provide the high-quality healthcare services to the community. Simply in answer to your question, if we are not in compliance by the deadline, we will not function as an acute care hospital, because essential services that we require are currently contained in the non-compliant building. And just to give you a frame of reference, we treated over 98,000 patients in 2009. So this is a very, very significant event. And if we're not able to complete the project, we'll be limited on the services we'll be able to provide, and many residents will have to seek healthcare services out of the area. But there are additional benefits to the community for doing the project. First is enhanced services for our patients. We provide new state-of-the-art facilities that will offer private rooms, new imaging and operating room equipment, and a better patient experience. Also, there's an economic benefit, of course, to the community. We'll provide jobs during the construction, additional tax base, and healthcare job growth. We're also continuing to support the city in its economic development by, of course, ensuring that healthcare, like education and other services, which are vitally important to attracting new businesses to the community, can rely on Los Robles Hospital as their healthcare institution. And of course, this project also supports the continued development of our very, very important services, such as orthopedics, cardiovascular, women's services, neurosciences, and oncology. Also, you may be aware that we have a growing shortage in what we refer to commonly as the caregiver pipeline, and that includes clinical staff, professional and non-professional, and also our physician services. This is a shortage that will only increase over time, and as demand for healthcare services increase, it makes the shortage that much greater. And a facility such as Los Robles and the project that we are proposing will help to ensure that we can effectively attract the best and the brightest clinical staff and physician staff to care for our community. Additionally, it allows us to continue to meet the needs of our growing and aging community, which allows for the continued service to meet the current and growing demand. And this graph here is a little bit difficult for you to see, it's a little bit busy, but the point being that if you look at ages 55 and up, you can see significant growth in that demographic. It's commonly referred to as the age wave. It's the baby boomers aging and continuing to demand an increased level of healthcare services. So what is being proposed, then? Well, you've heard it's an additional floor on the wing that was recently opened in 2007, an additional patient wing, and a new parking structure. The timeframe, as you've heard, is from 2011 through 2018 at an approximate project cost of $245 million. On your screen, you'll also see the master plan update. Let me, just to give you a pictorial rendition and orient you to the project scope, you'll see, of course, bounded by Lynn Road here, Janes to the south, Young Avenue here to the east. This is the existing building here presently. Thank you.
Excuse me, if you wouldn't mind repeating that, since you didn't have the microphone, you could start that entire part so that we could hear what you were saying.
Thank you very much. Again, just to give you a pictorial rendition of our campus and to describe for you the various project phases, you will see that the campus is bounded by Lynn Road to the, that would be the west, and Janes Road to the south, and then Young Road to the east. The original building is here, which needs to be, where the services need to be relocated from. The purple section that you have here is, essentially denotes the new patient tower where the addition will be made. The orange building is the new patient tower, and of course, on the corner of Lynn and Janes, which I guess is salmon-colored, is the parking garage that is proposed. As I said, it'll be a multi-phase project in order to manage both the construction and the patient movement logistics, which will be quite involved. And begins first with the fourth floor addition to the existing wing. Phase two then is the new patient wing. Phase three is the build-out of the space on the fourth floor of the existing wing. Phase four is the parking structure, and phase five is the build-out of the space on the third and fourth floor of the new patient wing. So why, what is the impact and why are we phasing it? Well, first, it's to allow us to continue to care for patients. Hospitals are a little bit different than some businesses in that we have to work around patients. We do not have the luxury of being able to say no and to vacate our patient population, but we need to perform construction in and around them in a safe and efficient manner. So we, of course, with every intent of not disrupting the services that our patients require. The phasing, at its conclusion, will allow us to replace 155 inpatient beds with 207 new private beds. And of course, the parking structure will then help us to satisfy the city and public requirements. The original building then will be converted to use for hospital staff, continued operation of certain specified services which can be, can continue to be located in the building, such as outpatient services, which might include same-day surgery and outpatient radiology. We also intend to utilize some of the spaces in the existing building as meeting space, which will be available to the community, and then of course, for storage. As we've talked about before, Los Robles Hospital, though, is not just the hospital, but it is the entire campus, a campus that includes medical office buildings, surface parking, and other services. And it is our intent to work closely with every landowner on the campus in order for us to create a solution which meets the long-term needs of our patients, visitors, our employees, physicians, and others who would frequent the other medical office buildings. Public safety and circulation is very, very important to us as well, as it is for the other landowners. So we have every intent to work with them to the best of our ability. While we certainly appreciate the majority of the community's overwhelming support for the hospital and for this project, we do recognize that Los Robles Hospital is within a neighborhood. We have every intention of being a good neighbor. We do realize, of course, that many who have purchased homes in this community have done so 20, 25 years ago. They might not have foreseen the kind of development that would be required in order to meet the community demand. And so we recognize that there are concerns, and we hope that our architects and, of course, the city planners in conjunction are able to mitigate, if not eliminate, most of the concerns for our neighbors. We do know that the parking structure, of course, is a concern for some, and we are pleased, at least with the design, in that we were able to take advantage of the grade and berming that currently exist, as well as the additional, I'm sorry, the existing trees that act as a screen for the structure. You'll notice that the parking garage is set back from the corner and stair steps in order that we might minimize the view, or maximize the view, minimize the sight of the parking structure. So it is two and a half grades below, and one on surface, and then two and a half elevation above grade. We believe with the existing trees and with the additional trees that will be added, that hopefully you can see in the pictures and the renderings, that it is very, very well screened, given its size. In addition, we're cognizant that the neighborhood, certainly behind the hospital, looking to the south, is concerned about the visibility of the additional floor and the new structure. We do, of course, intend to work with the city to provide additional screening there as well. We did, upon construction of the original 2007 tower, erect a wall at the request of the neighbors. Unfortunately, we did have to take some trees out in order to do so, so I'm not sure if it exactly met the neighbors' needs from that respect, but we do have plans to add additional trees in order to screen the new tower to the best of our ability. And of course, we'd just like to remind folks that Los Robles is an employer of more than 1,466 employees. We do pay about $126 million annually in competitive salaries and benefits. We are, of course, a taxpayer to the tune of about $2.2 million in property taxes annually, which of course benefit local schools and other tax-funded initiatives. And you might not be aware that we take care of and spend about $30 million annually in charity care to patients who are less fortunate than ourselves and don't have the ability to pay. And in addition to that, of course, we recognize our responsibility to support other important community initiatives, spending thousands of dollars annually, and of course, our leadership are involved in numerous community service organizations. We are the leading hospital in the Conejo Valley. Our patients tell us that they use us 63% of the time when compared to other hospitals in the East Ventura County. We are the winner of Ventura County Star Most Preferred Hospital. Also, this slide here, although it's very busy, only seeks to illustrate that when residents are asked, they prefer Los Robles over other institutions because of our overall care, the quality of our physicians, the quality of our staff, our reputation, and of course, their ability to get healthcare services. And we believe it's because Los Robles is committed to pursuing excellence. We are accredited by the Joint Commission, which is our good housekeeping seal of approval. We've been accredited also by the Joint Commission for chest pain. We are, were recently surveyed and expect to receive certification as a stroke center. We are designated as a comprehensive cancer care center by the American College of Surgeons, and Blue Shield has designated us as a top hospital for cardiac care. So because we pursue excellence, our community depends upon Los Robles. We are the STEMI receiving center for both Ventura and Los Angeles County, and what that means essentially is if you are suffering from symptoms which you believe to be a heart attack, EMS services know to bring you first to Los Robles Hospital, because we have the committed resources, the education, the training, the technology, in order to most appropriately care for you in the shortest amount of time. You've probably heard that heart is muscle. That's why it's important that you come to Los Robles Hospital. We're also the only emergency room in Ventura County, which has the EDAP pediatrics rating. We are certified as a Level 2 Neonatal Intensive Care by the State of California Children's Medical Services. We look forward very soon to being designated as a Level 2 Trauma Center in accordance with the county's creation of the County Trauma Plan. And we know that you all rely on our emergency departments and have been concerned about our wait times at the hospital, which essentially means, which is access for you, and so we have made it a very, very important priority of the hospital to decrease the average wait time to see a physician from anywhere from two hours to now an average of about 10 minutes. So in summary, I'd just like to say that this master plan is designed to meet the needs of an aging community that wants only the best healthcare. The plan will allow Los Robles Hospital to achieve compliance with seismic preparedness guidelines, provide better healthcare, benefit the community financially, and mitigate, if not eliminate, disruption and change for our local residents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Do we have questions of the applicant? Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Engel. So let's see now, you're permitted for 277 beds currently, correct?
That is correct.
How many beds do you have now?
How many beds do we have currently?
Currently?
We have...
Do you have the full 277?
We have 275 licensed beds on the main campus.
275 beds, okay. So you're too short of the max for the permit?
Correct.
And so is there a way, in hospital parlance, to measure, you know, what the average occupancy for those beds are? Sounds like a hotel or something. I mean, the average, like 150 of them being used, 200?
Yes. No, you're right on target. It is, in some respects, similar to a hotel. We do measure our average daily census.
Okay.
We take that census at midnight, and it does compute to an occupancy amount. The difficulty in measuring occupancy at midnight, however, is that we're frequently much, much busier and have many more patients in the hospital during the business hours than we do at midnight. And the reason for that is we see a tremendous number of patients who we see for observation, who might stay sometimes less than 24 hours, might be discharged before midnight, therefore not be included in the census. So it is true that we, our average daily census is much less than 275, closer to 225 maybe, but we see many, many more patients on most days than we do that is measured at midnight. In fact, many of our bed units actually are functioning closer to 90% occupancy, and anytime you achieve a level greater than 80, then you're approaching, you're having difficulty because you're, what it really does is it slows down the ability for us to move patients through the institution. And oftentimes, what you find is a backed-up emergency department, because if you're not discharging more, you know, quicker than you're admitting, then you approach gridlock. So architects in particular, and our experts here could answer this question better, but anytime you're even coming close to an 80% occupancy level in any of your bed units, they're asking for an expansion of some kind in order to meet those capacity needs.
Okay. Yeah, it sounds like from what you said, that's where you're at, about an 80% level, give or take, different variables, et cetera. Which, okay, well, I'm going to put you on the spot here, if I may, which brings me to my next question. This whole business of seismic versus non-seismic. Make your best case to me about why you need the 60 extra beds.
Well, I could probably make a case for more than 60, but I won't do that. The primary reason is, again, getting back to what we talked about now, we're already approaching capacity in many, many of our bed units. And so the need for expansion is a present concern. But then when you add on top of that the growing demand that we forecast in, over the next eight to 10 years, which will be a very, very real problem for our community because of, again, the aging population, to not take advantage of adding capacity during a major building project such as this, we feel will be shortsighted and create a significant burden on the community. We simply will not be able to take care of our patients, and our patients will have to leave the community for care.
I see. So you feel that the demographics are telling you, take advantage of the expansion possibility as you enter into this potential build?
Yeah, and if you remember, as I stated, that we'll be replacing about 155 beds and adding 217 new private beds. And so the real increase in capacity isn't as significant as the 60 beds in which you're quoting. And part of the reason for that is because we'll be losing some beds due to the construction. We'll also be, we have highly specialized units where we don't have the same flexibility. We can't put patient A in room B always because of male/female infection issues. We want to be careful not to cross-contaminate patients. We have a whole host of reasons why we have to cohort patients in specific areas. And so for us to get anywhere close to 80% capacity creates a real problem for us in being able to meet the patient needs.
Commissioner Adam, would I, would it be all right if I could ask permission, just because of the line of questioning you have? I had a question that came up this long. Would that be all right?
By all means, absolutely.
Humbly, I don't understand your line of work. However, a thought that was coming to mind that I was curious about, in looking at managing a hospital for a community, do you have to have a certain percentage of extra beds available for epidemics, natural disasters? I mean, is there kind of a rule of thumb for what might be another reason why you need a certain number of beds?
Well, it's a very good question, and I'm going to need the help of my architect in terms of building design to help answer that question. But you're right on target in terms of our need to be able to manage peak census and surge, and there's a variety of different situations in which we are faced with having to take a significant influx of patients pretty routinely. And so we do need a capacity that gives us maximum flexibility as opposed to managing, because we simply can't turn patients away very easily when they require our services.
Greg said it, actually. Yeah, you, there's, I think, two issues to be aware of. One of them is the licensing will require emergency plans, and you have to have physical space to accommodate those plans for all kinds of emergencies, whether they be seismic emergencies and that, in that the hospital will get an influx of patients to do something like that, or, you know, some kind of epidemic or something, a medical emergency of some kind or another. And they'll look at the region and the area to determine, working with the hospital, how much flex space you really need. And so we generally include that kind of analysis in our building design. And so we generally include that kind of analysis in our building design. The other thing to be aware of, I think to answer one of your questions, was across, we do needs projections, really based on demographics, across the state due to the grain of America, the bed need projection is up, and within the context of this campus, I think the big issue for your consideration is the ability to add, to respond to that need in the future. And if you look at this campus, after this project, it's basically built out. There is no more space on the campus. There's no more, there's no empty chair, if you will. And the other thing to be, just as an aside, is the existing building that we're going to be moving most of the functions out of will remain a hospital building. It just can't have some of the more critical functions, but there are many functions in the hospital that are not, that can, don't have to move. And Greg alluded to some of those, but there's others, too.
Could you just stage your name and city of residence so that we have it for our record?
Sorry. My name is Russell Triplet, and I'm with Perkins &amp; Will, the architect on the project.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Commissioner Adam, for allowing me to ask a question. Oh, absolutely, you still have the floor.
Oh, thank you. Something just occurred to me by listening to, you're the architect then, sir? Oh, thank you. The 38 beds on the proposed fourth-floor addition, 38 beds. In any way, would there be any ability to have that capacity in the old wing?
No.
I mean, because I know the old wing's still going to treat people.
Yeah, you can't put any inpatient beds. That's one of the functions that cannot be in the old wing. Is any inpatient beds?
No inpatient beds in the old wing.
That's one of the...
Just offices. Somebody can come in and have their blood pressure taken or something like that, but they can't...
Not doctors' offices.
Oh.
That's not really a hospital use.
Okay.
But many inpatient beds?
Okay. No inpatient beds in the old wing?
Outpatient radiology procedure, for example, but then not stay overnight.
Okay. All right. Thanks, that clears that up. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay. If not, thank you very much. We appreciate it. We are now going to open up for our public comments, our public testimony. I'd like to mention to you that we have, before we begin, I have written statement cards for which I have a total of 18, 12 in favor, excuse me, 12 opposed and six in favor. And then we have a whole slew of public statement cards, so I wanted just to make a couple comments before we begin this. I know most of you, this may be the first time that you've ever come down to a planning commission meeting and spoken up at a mic, and we appreciate all of you for coming down here and your willingness to contribute so that we can render the best decision possible. If I could ask you, when you come down, if you could, I'm going to go ahead and state three names in a row. There's plenty of extra seats down here, so we could get through them in a quick fashion if you could come down and sit and be ready so that we can keep them moving. Each one of you will have three minutes to be able to speak. When you come to the podium, there'll be a green light, which will tell you it's go. When it's about to conclude, you have one minute left, it will turn yellow so that you'll know ahead of time. Then the last thing is, is if we could all refrain from making any comments, because whether you're in favor or opposed, all comments are valuable. And again, because many people have never done this before, they can be intimidated. So let's make it a very positive environment for all people to be able to speak and share their thoughts. With that, our first speaker is going to be Julia Ladd, followed by Marilyn Graban, followed by Jackie Trouting. And if we could go ahead and have Marilyn and Jackie come down and sit so that we can keep it moving. Ms. Ladd, if you could state your name, city of residence, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Julia Ladd. My city of residence is Thousand Oaks, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the expansion of the hospital this evening. Madam Chair and Commissioners and staff, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I'm also the General Manager for the Oaks Shopping Center. And I'm addressing the parking structure comments and concerns by residents this evening because I can recognize exactly where that's coming from regarding the visual impact that is proposed for this parking structure. There were similar concerns during the recent renovation of the Oaks Shopping Center, and this helped me develop a very clear understanding of how the goals can be met for both the hospital and residents within the community to result in a visually appealing and highly functional parking facility. We worked hand-in-hand with the planning department and residents to help to create a design that works well for all. And knowing the facts is really very important in the first place because so many, so many times, people worry about the parking structure design, and if the facts aren't known, then nobody can really move forward. So in this case, it is important to know that there are not five parking levels above ground, but the parking structure accommodates, I believe Greg said, five and a half, whereas two of those parking levels are below ground, and then there's grade plus two parking levels, two and a half parking levels above ground, therefore creating a much lower height of the overall structure. In comparison, this is the same level of parking visible at the Oaks, and after two years of growth, much of the structure is screened by the trees and other landscaping. Some of those trees were existing, and we had to put them in a, in a designed setup, a nursery during that time, and then relocate them back, but we were able to reuse those existing trees, and those have lived, and then we added additional screening. So therefore, the hospital renderings show that the land around the parking structure will be significantly bermed and heavily landscaped to minimize the visual impact, and I noticed that they're using both existing trees and new. The hospital's been able to accomplish this berming design in the existing parking structure, and I have confidence they will do the same with the proposed. Finally, given the strict state restrictions requiring the infrastructure changes be made, Los Robles must meet the requirements placed upon them. In addition, we have a growing healthcare need in the community, and in order to accommodate these needs, we must have parking available that is convenient, accessible, and provides ample spaces for participant, for patients and guests. I have every reason to believe that by working through the design review process, which addresses the landscape screening, the parking structure proposed will accommodate both the aesthetic needs and functional aspects of the plan while creating something the community can be proud of. I urge you to vote in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ladd. Next speaker, oh, excuse me, questions of the speaker? I'm sorry, we have a question for you. Commissioner Adam?
Thank you. Hello, Ms. Ladd.
Yes, sir.
Hi. If I recall, in the formative stages of the mall expansion, the mace, which was quite good in community outreach, in fact, if I recall, you had at least three high-profile public meetings about the mall and all the expansion proposals. One was at the Hyatt, I think, one was, isn't that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I thought so. And was one of the issues brought up, the parking and structure?
Many times.
Many times.
And a lot of those answers can be very clearly worked through, through just answering that with the public.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's what I wanted to find out. Thank you.
So I think just accurate information will help.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Marilyn Graban, followed by Jackie Trouting, followed by Jean Cull. If you could state your name and city of residence, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Marilyn Graban, and I live in Seamy Valley. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I am in support of Los Robles Hospital's expansion plans. I work in the city of Westlake Village, and while I reside in Seamy Valley, my husband has been a patient at Los Robles many times, and we feel that it is our family hospital. I understand that the proposed expansion project is mandated by the state. I am pleased that it will provide all private rooms in a new, modern building, and that additional parking will be provided. I feel that our community deserves the best healthcare that modern technology can provide. The only way to do this is for the hospital to ensure it has the space to accommodate the newest equipment as it becomes available. Simply put, adding new equipment requires new space. Please give our community state-of-the-art healthcare by approving this project. Thank you very much.
Questions of the speaker? Next will be Jackie Trouting, followed by Jean Marie Cull, followed by Chuck Bente.
Good evening, Chairwoman Grumney and Commissioners. As a resident of Thousand Oaks, I count on Los Angeles, on Los Robles Hospital as my community hospital. I wish not to drive to the valley or Los Angeles for healthcare. My husband has used Los Robles Hospital many times in the past couple of years, and we want our hospital to provide everything we need for excellent care. In order for them to do that, they need to expand their hospital and parking. I support that. Let's cut down on adding more pollutants to the air by having all services in the Cano Valley accessible to us right here. Please vote for this product, project. Thank you.
I forgot to ask you, if you wouldn't mind, state your name and city of residence.
You did ask me, and I forgot, and I am Jackie Trouting, and I live in Thousand Oaks.
Thank you very much. Any questions of speaker? Jean Marie Cull?
I'm Jean Marie Cull, and I live in the Westlake Village portion of Thousand Oaks.
Welcome.
Good evening, Chairwoman Grumney and other Commissioners, Daryl. Over the past years, Los Robles Hospital has added a new wing and a parking structure. Both of these buildings are very attractive, and it's not every day you can say that about a parking structure. In fact, when you drive by the hospital, you don't even know you're driving by a parking structure. Because of its track record, I have no doubt the hospital has designed the new hospital wing and the parking structure with same sensitivity to views from the street and the neighborhood as they did the last time they built. I'm really strongly in favor of the expansion. Please consider voting yes on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of speaker? Our next speaker will be Chuck Bente, followed by Linda Barclay, followed by Jerry Robbins.
Good evening, council members. My name is Chuck Bente. I lived in Thousand Oaks since 1962. My picture's out there on the wall with the Piner's. I'm very opposed to this project. I live in the area, have for 26 years. I have a whole bunch of stuff here, and I'm not going to waste your time going through it all. This is all part of what Mr. Burr just sent to me. I'll probably go back and address all this to the City Council. But first off, I just want to say that we're going to have eight years of construction there. We just got over, what, five years of construction? So we're back to square one. I know that 112,373 cubic yards of dirt exported one way is going to create, with 15-yard trucks, 7,491 trips, one way. I know that this traffic mitigation fee is basically $23,401.30. This is to pay for what? The striping? Use in future? We don't know. The transportation demand management fund, it's going to be used regionally. It's kind of ironic that Los Robles dropped the regional from their name. I made a comment about the traffic lights being synchronized between Lynn Road and Moore Park Road. They can't do it east-west, obviously, but it's still funny that the lights on Lynn Road aren't synchronized, because when one car pulls up to Monzanas, a whole pack of cars going north on Lynn Road, they stop. So I question the validity of the statement that the lights were synchronized. Where am I at this year? Okay, so these entitlements, these so-called air noise and pollution entitlements, I'm not real clear what that means, but it sounds like an entitlement is like money. Sounds like somebody's paying to play. I don't know. Just a short term that's kind of off the wall, but anyway. The thing about coming out on the right-hand turn, going on to Jan's Road, everybody's going to go right through Sidley, Young, back on Jan's Road. We know that. There's no way out. The entrance and egress should be on Lynn Road. Other than that, the noise is unacceptable levels, da-da-da. Complete study already said there were unacceptable levels. It's in the EIR, and I agree, the levels of noise are unacceptable. Funny thing, on the way here, a paramedic truck, an ambulance, both with red lights flashing, going through Moore Park Road. Funny, lights are on, but no sirens. 6:30 in the morning, they're all on, but not tonight. Kind of ironic. I thank you for your time.
Any questions of the speaker? Mr. Bente, I have a question for you from Commissioner Adam.
Hello, Mr. Bente. Do you live in the vicinity of Los Robles Hospital?
37 Merrimore Street. You could probably, with a good arm, yeah, a real good arm, hit my house from the hospital. Not quite, but within probably, I'm within probably, I'd say 3,000 feet.
Okay. I'm not familiar with that particular street. Is it across from...
It runs parallel with Jan's Road. It's directly across from the entrance to Lorraine High School.
Ah, yeah, okay. I got it, I got it.
Triangle.
Let me ask you, as far as the project this before is tonight, have you been aware of any hospital outreach meetings that have been brought to your attention?
I have not aware of any that, and we've been, now, we opposed this two years ago. There were none then, when they did the initial expansion. I haven't heard of any now. We've done this through Kimberly Nelson, who may speak, and she's, but it's between her and I what we've found out about this, you know.
You personally haven't gotten any of the letters from the hospital or seen any?
None.
Nothing? Okay.
Nope.
Thank you.
All right, you bet.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Linda Barclay, followed by Jerry Robbins, followed by Joe Kirby. Well, thank you, thank you very much. So that leads Jerry Robbins, followed by Joe Kirby, followed by Lou Custodia. If you could state your name and city of residence?
Hi, I'm Jerry Robbins. I live in Thousand Oaks. Dear Planning Commission, I am a 13-year resident of Thousand Oaks, and I live within the 500 foot of the proposed hospital expansion. During most of the time I've lived here, the hospital has either been expanding their footprint, or there's been some type of proposed expansion in the hospital or the surrounding medical buildings. My biggest concern really tonight is, when is enough enough? I've lived through nearly 13 years, now you tell me I have to live through eight more years. I'm just tired of it. My issues I have, reservations I have about this whole project, is first of all, the density. Arguably, Los Robles Hospital is already the densest commercial district in Thousand Oaks. The hospital is planning to add additional 232,000 feet of medical space, another 256,000 square-foot parking structure. That's going to mean another 500,000 square feet of space, more than doubling the existing footprint. That fourth floor is going to dominate the skyline and change the character of surrounding neighborhoods. This property was never designed to support the amount of growth the hospital is proposing, and it's clear this property will be way overdeveloped if the project is approved. I have a problem with the zoning changes. I believe there's a reason we have zoning laws. Proposed development should conform to existing laws. To have a hospital to come up with some new zoning variance, I guess they call this the public, quasi-public institutional land facilities, so this project will meet their needs is just laughable. I'm concerned about traffic. The traffic studies, I think, are inadequate. Lynn, Jan's, and Moore Park are very heavily congested. It's very difficult to get out in the mornings. I live off of Marlowe. I can barely make a left turn in 10 minutes there. I'm concerned about our children's safety. There's at least six schools within a mile of the hospital. It's only a matter of time, if you keep increasing traffic, that some kid's going to get seriously hurt or killed while they're walking or riding bikes to school. I'm very concerned about the parking structure. The parking structure will affect myself and my fellow residents on Oberlin, Jan's, and Campbell. We'll have to deal with obstruction of the views, pollution, loss of privacy, noisy car alarms, increased noise from the elevator and mechanicals, parking lights at night, and excessive traffic. Many of us are going to live within 100 feet of this parking structure. It is totally irresponsible to build parking structures next to residential areas. It will be a very dangerous precedent to set. I do want to make a comment on the lady who had the parking structure built on the mall. Let's face it, there's no houses around there. How do you compare those two things? There's no houses anywhere near there. To wrap this up, to wrap this up, we have to make a very important decision tonight. When is enough enough? I've been given many reasons to sound the alarm button. Please take careful time, consider your decision, and make the right choice for us as Thousand Oaks residents. I do have two quick questions that came up, and I want to ask the planning commission, why would the hospital not consider retrofitting the existing structure? Don't let them tell you it's too expensive. There seems to be plenty of money to build a six-story parking structure, a new four-story building. I have a hard time believing it costs more to retrofit an existing building to build all these new structures, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Is there questions of the speaker? And if, again, we could refrain, and that's to create that environment for everyone. Commissioner Adam?
Excuse me, sir. Just a quick, what street do you live on?
I live on Oberlin. I have the lucky view of the Jan's Road and that beautiful parking structure.
Okay, I know the Oberlin street.
You know exactly on the hillside, right above it there.
In fact, if it's all the same to the speakers, it would help me as a commissioner Did you receive any community outreach attempts from the hospital, meetings?
No, I could give very little regard to the homeowners and the.
You sure?
No.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and since Mr. Robbins had mentioned he had a question, it's also fine for you to go ahead and ask a question. City staff will be responding to any questions that you might bring up in your. And so the next person to speak is Joe Kirby followed by Lou Custodia followed by Mary Harris.
My name is Joe Kirby. I live at 187 West Jan's Road, right off the hospital. My first issue is the planning process that brought us to this point. We've gone from a community hospital to a medical center with virtually no planning. If this state law was passed in 1998, why are we now here at the deadline trying to figure out what to do with the hospital? Why didn't we start a planning process sometime around 1999? My second issue is that if the only direction the hospital can grow in is vertical, then the whole site is inadequate for a medical center. I believe that we've been presented with an unfair choice by the city and by Las Robles Hospital. Either retrofit it or we don't have a hospital. That's not fair to the citizens. But what I really want to talk about is the accidents and the traffic situation around the hospital. I live at Accident Central, just off Young Avenue. My analysis of the accident is much different than traffic, city traffic department. I think there's four root causes. One is hospital employees, one is, another is hospital patrons, another is speeding on Jan's and another is the poor visibility of the site. Virtually 80% of the last four accidents that we've had have involved either hospital employees or hospital patrons. And you look at a hospital patron, they're visiting somebody sick, they're under stress, that's the best case. The worst case is that they're drugged or alcoholled out. And we've had both in our neighborhood. I propose the following plan for, a traffic plan for Las Robles Medical Center. I think all traffic should be routed through one entrance and one exit point. I think that you should put a light at Medical Center Drive and make that the single entrance and exit point. I think there's benefits to doing that. One is that all hospital patrons and workers could safely exit to the left, to the east. A light would act as a traffic brake, thus allowing people to turn left from Young onto Jan's more safely. A light would slow down the speeders on Jan's. And the ability to make a safe turn would tend to keep people off of Sidley and Young, which my neighbors are distraught about. Since we want to create a new skyscape zone, I believe that the speed limit should be reduced to 25 miles an hour up by the hospital. And finally, I think, especially during the construction phase, we should keep hospital employees from parking on the south side of Jan's, which will increase the amount of bailout room that drivers will have on Jan's, you know, and hopefully reduce the amount of collisions. And the traffic study indicates that there have been 11 accidents in that area in the last three years. Well, there's been 13. There was one, another one on May 5th and another one on May 7th. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of Speaker? Okay, we'll go to Lou Custodia followed by Mary Harris followed by John Anderson. You could state your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Good evening, members of Planning Commission, Chair, Staff, City Staff. My name is Lou Custodia. I live on Sidley Street, just below the hospital and have been there since 1975. I am here to oppose the plan as it's presently constructed. We have enjoyed a tremendous quality of life living on Sidley Street and I'm afraid that quality is going to be severely degraded if this proposal goes through. With the last expansion, ground was broken in July of 2004 and the project was completed around August of 2009, give or take a month or two. We will now be able to look forward to at least five more years and some have said tonight, eight years of more air, noise, dust pollution, not to mention the tremendous traffic impacts. The excuse for this proposal is that the hospital has to be upgraded to meet state earthquake standards and I don't doubt that. But actually, that was part of the excuse for the last expansion. I quote from an article dated December 11th, 2002 by Times staff writer Gregory Griggs, who said, "Speaker after speaker cited overcrowding at the 34-year-old facility which needs to modernize to meet state earthquake safety mandates." Now we're saying that again. So what happened before and why wasn't it fixed then? Why are we doing it again? Are earthquake mandates going to be used for another proposed expansion after this proposal is completed? The last 200,000 square foot expansion nearly doubled the size of the hospital. No mention was made of further expansion at that time. Now the current proposal is to add an additional 488,000 square feet, which is another doubling. When is the doubling going to stop? These piecemeal proposals bring questions as to what HCA is really up to. There's no doubt that this project will have a strong negative impact on property values. I've heard that 77 trees are going to be removed, but I haven't heard that tonight, so I don't know what the real story is. Tonight I've heard two oak trees. Previously I've heard 77, so I don't know what the real story is there, but nevertheless, trees are a good shield and none should be removed if at all possible. The other question I have is, HCA prepared to compensate property owners for loss of property value, which undoubtedly will be significant. I believe the properties around the hospital are considered by some in the community, depending on your special interest, to be sacrificial pawns and I really wonder what HCA's real motivation is beyond enhancement of the bottom line and protecting the property margins.
Mr. Custodia, I'm so sorry. I need to have you wrap up because you've exceeded your timeframe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of Speaker? If not, our next Speaker will be Mary Harris followed by John Anderson followed by Judith Williams.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Nice to see all of you. My name is Mary Harris. I live on Brazil, both my husband and I do. My husband is an employee of the hospital, but for my own personal opinion, I don't want to say too much other than I'm opposed to this project. This is the first time I've ever opposed anything. But number one, we already have a parking structure over there. The second of all, if any of you have been to the medical buildings as much as I have, try to get out from the second driveway from the medical buildings and either take the left going down from Lynn Road back down to Moore Park or go down the other way to Lynn. I'm telling you, you're taking your life in your hands. I was out on the dial line about two weeks ago because I had to go up for medical reasons to the medical buildings and right smack at the second driveway, right in the middle of the intersection, there was a two-car accident and I'll tell you, both cars were creamed. I mean, I was in the dial line, but I saw what happened, like, oh, I'm glad that wasn't me. But anyway, I don't see how we can add another parking structure at the corner of Lynn and Jan's and I don't see how we can add on. Las Robles is big enough. I don't know how much bigger that they're going to be able to get. Like I said, I think that they need to be careful of just getting so big. And another thing too is, I think that HCA is, you know, corporate people want to just get big, 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 but they don't realize, you know, when are they going to stop? They've got enough room to the hospital now. I mean, I don't know how much farther that they can go, but like I said, this is the first time I've ever opposed anything, so it is my personal opinion that I just cannot support this, so. I just wanted to let you know. Any questions?
Questions of Speaker? Thank you very much, Ms. Harris. Our next Speaker is John Anderson followed by Judith Williams followed by Jim Alexander.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is John Anderson. I'm a 25-year resident in Newberry Park. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I invite you to flashback to the early to mid 1990s and you recall two very active and vocal political groups in the city of Thousand Oaks. There were the Pro-Developers and the Slow Growth contingent and nary a kind word said between the two groups. As a property rights advocate and the owner of my own investment property, it was very difficult for me to identify with the arguments and opinions of those on the slow growth side. However, one of their statements has stuck with me these many years and that is, they want this to be another San Fernando Valley. And I thought at the time that could never happen in our Thousand Oaks. Now, nothing much has changed from day to day, but if you compare the Thousand Oaks of 2010 to the Thousand Oaks of 1990, nothing remains the same. One exception of a few feet in this area of town led to an exception of a few feet in this area of town. An exception for greater density here led to an exception for greater density here. Over these 20 years, there have been few expansions that have been denied and many exceptions have been made to the general plan, both increasing density, size and traffic. Something else was different 20 years ago. We had two hospitals in the Caneo Valley. We had Las Robles and we had Westlake Hospital. And many of you will recall that Westlake Hospital was bought and closed down by HCA. Imagine the difference had a tenant or Catholic Healthcare West or someone else purchased the property and we would have two vibrant hospitals in the community. We wouldn't require the greater density in one area or the other. We would have the traffic spread out. Things would be substantially different if we had two hospitals still in the community. I would like to ask you guys to consider very, you guys, I'm sorry, Commissioners, to consider a very personal question. Each of you moved into your neighborhood with the expectation that the zoning of your neighborhood would not change, that the format and layout of your neighborhood would not change and that the traffic would not change. Imagine for a moment that your fellow neighbors decided to tear down their houses and build a five or six-story apartment building. Obviously, you would be very disappointed at that change in the ambiance of your neighborhood. And that is what's been happening to our neighbors around the Las Robles Hospital. My encouragement to the Commission is to consider rejecting any expansion of this particular property and my encouragement to HCA would be to consider your expansion at a location other than at the intersection of Jan's and Lynn. Thank you for the time and for listening.
Please, if you could refrain from any. Oops, any questions of Speaker? As you walk away, Mr. Anderson, I just want to personally thank you for your contribution in the Newberry Park area to Track and Field and it's lovely still seeing you out there running. Our next Speaker will be Judith Williams followed by Jim Alexander followed by Ross Goldberg.
Good evening. My name is Judith Williams and I live in Thousand Oaks. I'm a registered nurse and I've been a volunteer at Las Robles Hospital for eight years. I am currently the President of the Volunteer Board of Directors. I've lived in Thousand Oaks for 12 years. First thing I do when I move into a community, or think about it, is to see if there's a hospital there. And what kind of hospital it is, is it a full-service hospital? Las Robles is definitely that. And I had reason to make use of Las Robles soon after I moved here. I was in ER, into surgery and had open-heart surgery. Six months later, I had more open-heart surgery. Needless to say, I was benefited by the existence of this hospital that qualified for that high level of care. I believe that the current new building is extremely attractive and added new private rooms for the community, which seems to be the way things are going nowadays. The new proposed tower will be exactly like the current one and can only add to the hospital's appearance. More than that, it'll add more beds badly needed. Having worked as a volunteer in the emergency department, I've seen the backup of patients as they wait for beds upstairs, so this new extra beds will be helpful. With regard to the parking structure, it will be built in the lower area of the hospital campus, down where the doctor's offices are, and is protected by large trees that can't be seen from the road. I understand the concern of the traffic situation on Lynn Road and Medical Center Drive, but I am fully confident that the hospital will cooperate fully with the city to make it safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of Speaker? If not, our next Speaker will be Jim Alexander followed by Ross Goldberg followed by Artis Nelson. Again, just to repeat, your name and city of residence.
Good evening. My name is Jim Alexander. The city of residence is Thousand Oaks, California. I live right at the corner of Jan's and Lynn Road. In fact, I live approximately 15 to 20 feet above the intersection there, right on the corner. I'm going to be less than 50 yards from one of the walls of the parking structure. I'm very, very concerned about eight more years of construction, noise, traffic, street parking for construction workers who aren't paid overtime to commute from the soccer It was mentioned that the setback on Jan's Road for the parking structure was between 90 and 105 feet. However, I attended a meeting on Thursday last week at Las Robles Hospital and Russell went to the maps and he pointed out to me that the setback is really 40 feet from the sidewalk. So if it's 40 feet from the sidewalk and you give 10 feet from the curb to the sidewalk, that's 50 feet. I don't know where the 90 feet to 105 feet come from. I'm really, can see from my house that more trees are going to have to be added in that 40-foot space, okay, from the sidewalk. I'm not sure how they're going to get all those trees in, in a 40-foot space. However, I believe they might be able to squeeze them in. My greatest concern though is the increase in traffic. We have a tremendous amount of traffic at the corner of Lynn and Jan's Road. In fact, when they put the traffic lights in, I've lived there over 30 years, when they put the traffic lights in, I got all of the carbon monoxide floating up whenever the cars would stop right into my backyard and it's not a good thing. We're just going to add to the carbon monoxide that affects the backyards of Jan's Road as well as Lynn Road. I'm worried about the privacy. I'm worried about the number of accidents increasing, as I have witnessed many of them. I'm also worried about the noise increase and I'm worried about the valuation of my home and the other homes on Campbell Avenue. I'm worried about the rezoning impact. Those are just a few of the things that concern me and I appreciate your time, I appreciate your consideration. Obviously, I'm really opposed to this new construction. Thank you very much.
Questions of Speaker? There is a question for you from Commissioner Adam.
Oh, good evening, sir. Did I hear you say that you did in fact attend a meeting at the hospital?
Pardon me?
Did I hear, I beg your pardon, did I hear you say that you did in fact attend a meeting at the hospital in regards?
Yes, I did. This was last Thursday.
How'd that come about? What was that on?
Well, I received a single letter in the mail from Las Robles on April 27th, 2010 and they invited myself and others, obviously, to this meeting which would take place on May the 20th, I'm sorry, on May 18th, Tuesday, or on Thursday, May the 20th, from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
I see. How many people were there approximately, you know?
I'm estimating approximately between 40 and 50 people.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next Speaker will be Ross Goldberg followed by Artis Nelson followed by Steve Burge.
Madam Chair, Commissioners and Staff, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Ross Goldberg. I'm a resident of Westlake Village. I live there with my wife and teenage son, who's a student at Westlake High School. I've lived there for 12 years, which I know makes me a newcomer compared to many of the people in this room. I'm speaking tonight as a resident, as a local business owner and also as Chairman of the Board of Las Robles Hospital. The chair position is a, I am a community volunteer position. I'm also someone who has worked in the healthcare-related field for the past 34 years, so I'm very familiar with the complexity of the public policy issues and the heavy government regulations that engulf the industry. I bring another perspective as well. When the Northridge earthquake hit in 1994, its epicenter was actually the parking lot of Northridge Hospital. And at the time, I was affiliated with that hospital, so I'm keenly aware of the devastation that such a natural disaster can bring and the challenges that it brings upon the local healthcare community. In the wake of that earthquake, California Senate Bill 1953 was passed mandating that all hospital inpatient mandating that all hospital inpatient care must meet seismic safety standards by 2013, and all of a sudden, that isn't far away. Las Robles Hospital began addressing this issue in 1999 and is now ready to move forward to build a new structure to address community need. Hospitals all around the state are wrestling with this issue, and for many of them, the issue is how are they going to afford to build to continue to serve their community? I believe this community is very fortunate and should feel very grateful that we have a hospital that is willing to put up nearly a quarter of a billion dollars to continue to support the needs and the evolution of this community. Building a new structure will not only allow the hospital to comply with the seismic safety requirements, but it will allow the hospital to complete its master plan. The parking structure that was built in 2004 was designated to be as unobtrusive as possible, and it's become the gold standard for parking in the community. The same sensitivities are now in play here. That includes our shared concern for viewscapes, speed, noise, and traffic. And for that reason, we've conducted two well-attended community meetings, and it's why we are planning very dense landscaping around the parking structure. Keep in mind that we're not only a business, but we are also run by local residents who share the same concern of all of our neighbors: a safe community, a clean place to live, and a great environment to raise our children. Part of this great environment is a hospital that cares about the community and allows residents to get exceptional care exceptionally close to home. In that spirit and with that goal, I asked a planning commission to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of speaker? Our next speaker will be Artis Nelson, followed by Steve Birch, followed by Mark Glazer.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and fellow commissioners. My name is Artis Nelson—excuse me—and I live in Thousand Oaks. This is déjà vu for me. I was at the planning commission before the hospital was built. I live on Sidley and Young, and that hospital was not there then. And what we were promised by that commission was a low-profile community hospital, not a regional medical center with multiple, multiple stories. I could not ever figure out why we would have a giant megawattless hospital in a residential area. It doesn't make sense to me. There was one over in Westlake that was in a commercial area. And I think they still have that hospital, part of one, anyway. There's one over there, and then there was the old Westlake Hospital. And our neighborhood has been really—since this hospital expansion—the noise from the helicopters, from the ambulances, and the increased traffic has made living in this area not— it can't be a nightmare, but it's not as pleasant as it was. And I know this is going to be worse by the time we get through with eight years of construction and all of those trucks going through. And there are children on Sidley Street, and they do play in the street. They play ball. There are no parks right there that they can run to and play in. And if we have that traffic come through there, it'll be a nightmare. And you will regret it. I mean, another question I have is, if you don't build it, are they going to be out of—if they don't build this hospital, are they going out of business in 2013? And at what time—at what point did this hospital become a regional center? Can the building be used—can the old building be used or retrofitted to come up to 2013 standards? And how many total beds will there be when the project is complete? Those are the questions I have. And I don't know who can answer them. But I thank you for your time. And if you have any questions?
Any questions of speaker? Your questions will be answered by the staff when they come—when we return it back to staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Steve Birch, followed by Mark Glazer, followed by Lisa Rang.
My name is Steve Birch. I live three doors east of Young Street on Thousand Oaks. My wife is a schoolteacher up at Aspen Elementary School. We're very concerned about the students walking to school, back and forth. It's—our family has had two cars totaled by cars driving down Jan's Road. And we feel that it has been—that HCA is coming to you with a problem, saying that they need more beds. But they're the ones that caused the problem in the first place by buying Westlake Hospital and then closing it down. So it's kind of like the child breaking his toys and then complaining to his mom and dad that he doesn't have any toys. The protestations of good intentions are falling on deaf ears. Anybody can do philanthropy when you have enough money. And if you have enough money from the hospital, great. You can give $88,000 to local charities. That's great. But that doesn't negate the fact that they have been irresponsible and treated the neighborhood in a cavalier fashion. We did not get the notice of the meeting that took place Thursday night. I did go, but only because I was informed by a neighbor who got that. The zone change—well, how many more waivers? How many waivers has the hospital already had? How many zone changes had to be made already? I don't know the answer to that. But a zone change from commercial to now institutional, and what's that going to do for the future? Where—the question was asked earlier, where does this stop? A zone change right now to institutional, what is that going to open up? How many more doors is that going to open up? How many more stories will that be—will be allowed with the zone change to institutional? As was pointed out, when this hospital was first built, it was promised that this would be a local hospital, not a regional medical center. At some point, this was changed to regional medical center, and now we're getting the blowback from all of that. The traffic plan that we've heard about tonight is completely inadequate, has not addressed the concerns, hasn't done anything about changing the— we haven't heard anything about whether or not the traffic commission would be in favor of putting additional traffic signals there, slowing down the speed limit. The fact that the hospital wants to spend eight years, more construction, and thousands of hourly workers there, as well as truck trips, and for the addition of 60 or so beds, is a huge price to ask the citizens of the area to pay. In addition, there's no plan for mitigating the light pollution other than to say, "We're going to change our schedules. We're going to have 12-hour shifts." That's ridiculous, and it won't be followed.
Thank you. Any questions of speaker? If not, Mark Glazer, followed by Lisa Rang, followed by Kimberly Wilson.
Good evening, commission members. My name is Mark Glazer. I'm a resident of 194 West Sidley and have been for 22 years. And I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I think the issue is not whether or not HCA and the hospital and its current administration are good or bad. That's not the point. They're decent people. They provide a great service to our community. I think the issue before us this evening is whether or not you folks, you commission members, are going to do your job. Your job is to ensure that the zoning, that the planning in this community that we all love and why we all came here and bought homes, that it's going to be upheld. With all the amendments and variances and zoning manipulations that have to be accomplished to get this project through, must tell you that we're trying to fit this into a shape that just doesn't fit. This community, my community, my neighborhood near this hospital has borne the brunt too long to have to deal with what the ever-expanding hospital has meant to us, right? The hospital should exist. The hospital should exist somewhere else as well. And we can't rehash the history of how we got here today. But we can't stop using our neighborhood as the bully, as the bully pet for the hospital's expansion. We have to have some respect for the neighbors. Now, I read the EIR report, and, you know, I don't know hydration issues. I don't know sound issues and lighting issues. It's beyond my comprehension. But when I read that the staff concludes that the aesthetics of this project are not significant, I can't believe anything in that report, what that staff came up with. I sit in my backyard. I know what the last expansion meant, and I know what this project's going to be now to the people. You will note that in Exhibit G in the EIR, someone took a picture on the street from West Sidley to show what the expansion's going to look like. I think it's disingenuous at best that they took a very mild photograph. I went around to the neighborhood. If you go back on Erton, on Whitworth, and Oberlin, and Siesta, you see that this project already looks like the shining city on the hill, and it's only going to get worse with the expansion. This is not something that this staff concludes is less than significant. And I just can only sum up by saying, please, members of the commission, do your job, protect our neighbors, plan this thing correctly, and reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, please, I need to ask you to refrain from clapping. I appreciate. Lisa Rang, followed by Kimberly Wilson, followed by Shane Haas.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Rang. I am a resident of Thousand Oaks for almost 40 years and have lived by the hospital for eight years on Siesta Avenue. Over the years, many changes have taken place. Each time this town grows, I say to myself, "That's okay. It's growing well." We keep the industrial businesses in the industrial section. We take a lot of value in our community providing that small-town feeling and the quality of life. The changes proposed by the hospital are initiated by state requirements. The hospital is taking advantage of these requirements to convert our residential hospital into a major medical center. Do the state requirements substantiate the addition of 277,000 square feet? Another cedar sieni might look nice on the resume, and the income can be so enticing. However, are we selling our soul? The noise level in our yard increased with the addition of the newest wing. We have a neighbor who used to camp out in his backyard with his kids for the summer, but won't anymore because it's too noisy. We put in a water feature, but it still doesn't cover up the additional noise. At night, the building is lit up and lights up half of our house. Our property values and sellability of our homes already decreased. Now, it's proposed the hospital grow taller, larger, and closer. I look over at many pine trees providing a partial curtain of the existing facility, looking to see the first signs of the pine beetle, knowing it's a matter of time before they're destroyed. What measure is being taken to provide a new barrier, a barrier tall enough to cover the new 65-foot goliath? In the EIR, one of the less-than-significant impact studies covered the West Sidley Street. How pleased the HCA must have been to only have to cover the impact of one single street next to the new tire tower. This is a hilly area, and the Sidley Street is just the first row of stadiums seating for more than 100 homes with direct views of the hospital, the majority of which didn't get notice of this because they don't live within 500 feet. So they were unaware. I would like you to consider the reasonableness and necessity of the full proposal. Are we going to maintain our quality of life or be sold out to the big business under the guise of seismic requirements? I believe the needs of the hospital can be met by adding only the two-story wing, deny the fourth floor, deny a new four-story wing and garage, and stick to a fair and reasonable new two-story wing. You will be making the call. You represent the people of this town. This can be a win-win situation for both the residents and the hospital. Please make the right choice. And I do want to add, since I have a couple seconds, that the idea—I walk with my kids to school occasionally, and the idea of doing so with all the new traffic terrifies me.
Thank you. Questions of speaker? If not, Kimberly Wilson, followed by Shane Haas.
Can I provide pictures to be handed out to you guys?
Yes. Kimberly Wilson, followed by Shane Haas, followed by Jack McGee.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Collins-Nelson. I live at 26 Marimar Street, outside of the 500-foot zone. I found out about the EIR and other things from the Acorn, and that's how my neighbor, Mr. Bente, found out was from me. I'm not going to reiterate most of the people's concerns. I agree with all the concerns. We're not trying to judge the hospital on their care. We know their care. I've had two children at that hospital. I've had heart surgery at that hospital. They're a fantastic unit. What we don't want is the impact in our neighborhood. I've raised three children. One's 25, one's 20. Those two children, I felt safe letting them cross Jan's Road at Hendrix or at Marlowe to go to Aspen or to go to Redwood. My daughter in the seventh grade was crossing at Hendrix. She was three-quarters of the way across the street on her bicycle when one person had stopped going northbound. That car got hit by another car. That car got hit by another car. If my daughter would have been walking, she would have been hit by this three-car accident. She was 11 years old. I talked to the police. They talked to her. I talked to planning. They said there aren't warrants to do anything in our area. So the hospital can add all these units. They can add all this traffic. They can get everything that goes at 9:00 in the morning so that everybody makes their doctor's appointments, and the doctors get there on time. And everybody speeds down our streets and through our community and makes the right turns through Young and up Sidley and back to Jan's. And then they're lost and got to find their way back to the freeways and puts 1,100 truck trips—which is accurate, as Mr. Bente's a contractor— onto our streets, which will take Jan's because it's to the closest freeway. You need to look at our community. These are my neighbors. I've lived in that neighborhood for 34 years. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions of speaker? If not, Shane Haas, followed by Jack McGee, followed by Mary Lou McGee.
Good evening. My name is Shane Haas. I'm a volunteer—I live here in Thousand Oaks. I'm a volunteer at Las Robles Hospital, and I'm currently the first vice president said to be president of 221 of the hospital's volunteer program. I've been a volunteer for nearly four years. I've also given the privilege to shadow and the emergency room under the beloved Dr. Darryl Davia after graduating high school. I was born and raised in Thousand Oaks and for the past five years as a local real estate agent. The Las Robles Hospital has been a symbol of excellence, not only in my personal life, but also my business. Since the beginning of Las Robles Hospital, obviously earlier than my existence, it has been a part of our community, caring and giving time and time again. In a growing community, the hospital has needed to follow the demands of our town and ever-changing generations. Las Robles seems to have done so with first and foremost community in mind. The most recent expansion of the hospital in the parking garage was elegant and architectural without taking away from the local residents and the small-town feel. With the lush landscaping surrounding the hospital and its building, it allows one to simply drive by on Lynn or Jan's without noticing the complex that Las Robles has become or will become. In my business, I deal with people relocating to our wonderful community due to not only its school's location and its serene backdrop, but also proximity to an elite hospital. The new swings gets nothing but raves when in contact with the patients that come in and out of Las Robles Hospital daily. But it is obvious, even as a volunteer, it is simply not enough space and parking for the ever-growing patients visiting. I was told that the new parking garage will be similar to the current parking garage, two floors underground, one ground, and three floors above ground. Looking at the current parking garage today, it is hard to even tell it is a parking garage from the main roads. It also seems to be one of the shortest buildings amongst all the other structures hospital buildings. It seems to be the most inconspicuous building, not only due to the architecture, but the lush, mature landscaping surrounding the grounds in the building, plus the additional that the hospital plans to put in. I truly believe in the hospital expansion to be most valuable to our community. I truly believe that the hospital will go about the expansion with the community in mind, especially any traffic visible and other residential issues. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you very much. Questions of speaker? Okay, our next speaker will be Jack McGee, followed by Mary Lou McGee, followed by George Kalos.
Hi. My name is Jack McGee, and I live on Campbell Avenue, right across the street from the hospital. Our backyard is a direct view of the driveway. And I'm called to the wall quite often by the sound of crashes. Now, this is a little— Now, this is a little bit like déjà vu, because I was here for the meetings concerning the parking garage that was going to be, was being recommended and was being reviewed by the council. And of course, that project was turned down, as it should have been. After all, this is going to cause thirty-seven hundred new day trips into that area. That's a lot of cars. And we still only have the entrance and the egress, the only two areas that handle that traffic. Now, somebody, a couple of people came up here and talked about the excellent care at Los Robles Hospital. That's like a straw man. They are a wonderful hospital. I have been a patient there, many of us have. We have a great deal of respect for the hospital, but this is an issue of economy of scale. It's as simple as that. Since 1980, I believe, the state and the county has been calling for a new medical center for Thousand Oaks area, a separate one. And we do need that. We just can't pile up the levels. The last time that I spoke with the council concerning the project across the street, as I said earlier, it was a parking garage, and I was concerned, as I am now, about the light pollution and turning it into an oil refinery, because that's exactly the only thing I can think of. There's going to be light, and there's some people living on Siesta and down on Sidley that are just going to be up all night, because the lights will be there, and the hospital architect told me there's nothing they can do about that. Now, that hospital is built on alluvial soil. Right across the street is a volcano. Now, that volcano has long been dormant, but it's the land itself. It's alluvial, and that means that it does not hold water very well. The engineers on the previous project that was proposed here admitted that you go down about eight feet and you find groundwater. Now, you're going to put more weight on it, that it's going to be like a sponge. So I think that the city should consider possibly working with the hospital to help them find an alternative place that they can build a hospital, even if it means working in the area of eminent domain and finding something that we can accommodate the hospital with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Our next speaker is Mary Lou McGee, followed by George Kalovos. And I hope I'm pronouncing it how I do. You could state your name and city of residence.
Mary Lou McGee, 2015 Campbell Avenue in Thousand Oaks. If you're driving by Los Robles Hospital, it is an absolute beauty spot. You can't even see the hospital from Lynn Road. However, as my husband and I pointed out, we don't happen to do a lot of driving by. We live directly across the street from Medical Center Drive and Jan's Road. The proposed in-and-out entrance, I cannot believe this, to the new parking lot, and an estimated increase of trips through a driveway of three thousand eight hundred and thirty trips a day into the driveway, which I believe it was mentioned earlier, has an obstructed view. On the EIR report, on page V, 1A, cars are shown on that Medical Center Drive backed up, waiting to get out onto Jan's Road, which is moving downhill much faster than the posted thirty-five miles an hour. I heard this evening that Lynn Road and Medical Center Drive intersection is some kind of a designated in the seventies sacred cal, which cannot be changed. Well, this status should be changed. Open Lynn Road and Medical Center Drive, open that medial strip so the traffic can go in both directions. Voila, nobody going around Sidley, nobody coming up Young, and guess what? No light at Young and Jan's. Right? I have two questions. Will the zoning change for the parking garage allow other buildings to add floors and/or be built closer together? Because the last issue we were here about was a doctor wanting to put another office building in there. And will the parking lot be opened in the evenings? How will that be controlled? And I really think that in good conscience, we need to ask, what is the cost of retrofitting the existing structure? Because when we went to the meeting the other night, one of the things that was mentioned is it is actually less expensive to do all this building and impact that site further than it is to retrofit the existing structures. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions of Speaker? Our next speaker is Mary Lou McGee. Whoops, sorry. Sorry, I, yeah, I made a mistake. Our next speaker is George Kalovos, followed by Tula.
My name is George Kalovos. I live in Thousand Oaks, right kitty-corner from the hospital, in Lynn Ranch North. We lived there for thirty-four years, and now we are facing the extension of the hospital, which we love. It's a very good hospital, with very good doctors. I'm not very familiar with the new management of the hospital, but I have heard that they are preparing to get a NIPo, and I don't know if that is true or not, but, and also, I know because we went to the meeting, that they anticipate to spend about a quarter of billion dollars to improve the facilities. The problem is, there's nothing wrong with all of these things, but the problem is, the lot of the hospital is not enough for a new business to which they're going to invest a quarter of a billion dollars. If I were to do that, to invest a quarter of a billion dollars to a small area, which is probably built by now, built out, I would anticipate to have a business that are growing, and I cannot see how it can grow if it is now the master plan that they told us that it is. It cannot grow beyond what is proposed now. It's not a place. We need a hospital, as the other people said, located properly in an area that is not destroy our lives, is going to destroy our way of life. You people are for the total community, and the total community is both the business, the medical establishment, and also the citizens. And we have a problem. We have a big problem. The location cannot survive. Either one of the two things is going to happen. Either the business is not going to do well, or the neighborhood is going to dilapidate, be dilapidated. Traffic is going to be very, very high, the pollution is going to be very big. Most of the people, it is, I'm not sure about the statistics, but our neighborhood has a lot of kids. It's not all old people.
I'm so sorry. I have to ask you.
Thank you very much, and I hope that we all jointly make an effort to improve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions of Speaker? Our next speaker is Tula Kalovos, followed by Karen Martin, followed by Michael Tognow.
My name is Tula Kalovos, and I live in Thousand Oaks, I think, thirty-nine years, thirty-seven, thirty-nine years. People with a vision and imagination develop this beautiful city into a model city. Let's keep it that way and not allow people with a vision of future profits to turn it to contemporary nightmare. Our neighborhood is at the corner of Jan's and Lynn Road, as my husband said, but no one bothered to inform us of this project. And as aware as we are, we had many things happen, and we did not know until Los Robles mailed on the 27th of April an invitation to a presentation. How can you take decisions without some of the feedback from people that are so affected? We are right across from the hospital. I have too many things to say, and I'm very upset. Just to remind the Planning Commission, Lynn Ranch North is a residential area with adjacent open spaces and access to horse trails at Lynn Ranch. If you refuse to see beyond the horse blinders, I'm afraid you would be insensitive to the ruination of one of Thousand Oaks' best neighborhoods. It was the best neighborhood when North Ranch was built, and will be forcing the people that live there to endure a drastic change in their environment and standard of living. Some of us are too old, and we don't think we're going to move, and some are young and they cannot afford to. The fact that they're refusing, they're referring to the new hospital as a campus scares me. Los Robles was a small hospital, and we all loved it. Its success was not due to its size. Up to now, we hear the glories of what Los Robles did, but it wasn't because it was big, it was because it had good doctors. And coming from a family of five generations of doctors consecutively, including my son, there's no one that respects the medical profession than I do. But I also see it being used by business, by insurances, which draw out of the doctors their life to make money. Money is the answer. We say, we ask questions, why don't you retrofit the hospital? Why don't you mitigate, if that's what the state wanted? That will cost a lot of money. Why don't you move to Westlake? That is your property. That will cost money. When it costs money for us to move away from our houses, whose money is worth more? So the question is a question of money.
Thank you very much. Questions of Speaker? Our next speaker will be Karen Martin, followed by Michael Tognow, followed by Hannah Grossman.
Hello. My name is Karen Martin. I live at 2000 Ferndale Place. I received one of the 138 letters mailed on the proposed Los Robles expansion. I vote no on the project. We were given no alternatives to consider. Why wasn't the noise level measured at the southwest corner of Lynn and Jan's? My studies showed noise levels were clearly unacceptable and will cause hearing damage in my yard. EIR says the parking structure will be closed at night, yet at a recent meeting at Los Robles, a Rick Lemo stated that it will be keycard access. Please expand on the conditions, the parking structure, traffic, and availability. Why is the parking garage not considered a significant source of noise since it's restricted to hospital staff? That's W8 on the final EIR. Your response to P1 seems to contradict your response to V6. Please edify me. This is on the light shed, because it doesn't seem to work, even though that's what you're proposing. Still waiting for a response to the question, why is this project allowed to remove more trees than they replace? They still need a waiver because the garage is too tall even with the zoning change? That's got to tell you something. When a resident complained about the light from the existing hospital garage, she was referred to W8. You'll have to look that up. It's evident that these measures are to mitigate the nighttime lighting, don't work. It's noted that in the EIR that construction could produce vibrations detrimental to surrounding residences. Conditions need to be in place for all restitution of damages to homes surrounding the hospital, not limited but including insurance policies, contact names, and numbers ahead of time, please. Since the project will produce 165.8 pounds of ROC and 25.82 pounds per day of NOX maximum, I'd like a specific amount that will be paid to the TDM and stipulate those monies to be devoted to revitalization of the Lynn Road corridor, rubberized asphalt, repair sound walls. Sound walls I don't have to pay for and build. Oaks Mall project produced 40 pounds of ROC and contributed $367,000 in 2003 and 2005. How long will it take the trees to achieve density implied in the photo? You stole my line. I think if they're going to do that, they should plant them now. If it's going to take ten years, let's get the trees in the ground, people. I'm curious how many trees it takes to block the visual impact of a parking garage next to open space on a scenic highway to make it aesthetically pleasing and visually compatible? How do you increase the bed number from 224 to 337, which is a 50% increase? Increase the parking from 1,018 to 1312, which is only a 25% increase, and consider that to be adequate? Shouldn't we see some projections about staff needed per patient numbers? What conditions are in place to be sure the contractor follows the guidelines to mitigate carcinogens in noise production? Third-party monitoring, perhaps? And the truck beds are going to be covered? There's kids? Can we get notification when they're going to be doing all this? That's it.
Thank you very much. Questions of Speaker? If not, Michael Tognow, followed by Hannah Grossman, followed by Dr. Paul Finkel.
My name is Michael Tognow. I reside in the city of Thousand Oaks, specifically on Campbell Avenue. I'm against this project for a multitude of reasons, many of which you have heard tonight, but just to reiterate several key ones, which I feel are very important. This neighborhood has really borne the real brunt of this expansion and will continue to do so. As stated previously, there was a two-and-a-half, almost three-year construction project for the first phase, and it's really only been the last nine to 10 months where there has been no construction in the area. Now we're talking about a project which will go until 2018. You're talking about eight years of increased traffic, truck trips, excavation, cranes, hammering, hammering of pylons, particularly for any type of structure that's going to take place. It's just, essentially, the footprint here is just not there, and I feel that it's really trying to fit the proverbial square peg into the round hole. In addition to the increased traffic and the increased noise just from the construction, after the construction phase, you're talking about a whole slew of increased traffic, and along with that comes increased noise. As you know, there currently is a committee that is studying ways to reduce traffic and reduce noise along Lynn Road. Certainly, this project does not help that in any way whatsoever. Also, should this project be approved? I really think that it's really going to be a slippery slope here, folks, in that we've already heard from staff comments about potentially having to widen Lynn Road, which, again, just leads to increased traffic, increased noise, and so forth. And there was talk about a bike lane, which I think is pretty laughable, because if you add a bike lane there, I suppose it's a good thing the hospital is there, because you're certainly going to need it. Basically, just to conclude, I would just ask each of the commission members to really take a hard look at this project and listen to the voices that you've heard tonight and think about the impact that this is going to have on the community until 2018. The decision you make tonight is going to have an impact until 2018, and I just want to impress upon each of you that, that you're going to affect the lives of all these people until that time. Thank you.
Questions of Speaker? If not, our next speaker will be Hannah Grossman, followed by Paul Finkel, followed by Rick Horn. Or, I believe, I apologize.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Hannah Grossman. I live in Westlake Village, California, and I'm pleased to speak to you tonight on behalf of the medical staff. I am chief of the medical staff. We have 520 doctors, so I would like to relay a few things to you. I want you to understand, when the original project came through with the building of the new tower that was completed in 2007, that the new tower that was completed in 2007, that was as a direct result of all of our requests for private patient rooms and for adequate facilities to take care of all of you. And we've heard from many of you here tonight that you've had wonderful experiences at our hospital, and I want you to know that that was tremendously related to a lot of lobbying on our part. And I've been a part of the medical staff there for 25 years, and it has taken a lot of lobbying to get a lot of millions of dollars poured into our facility. And I want you to know that did not come easily. I want to address a couple of things. The absolute need for, I'm sorry, I'm not a very good public speaker. The absolute need for more space for technology. When you see all of the different things that we have available for us now and all the different ways that people have been treated, and it's expanding ever more, so we do need more space. In order to maintain our wonderful private rooms and our ability to care for our families and for ourselves, we absolutely have to be state-of-the-art. We have taken pride in maintaining our local presence. The reason why regional is not on our sign anymore was because we rebelled. We said we want it to be Los Robles Hospital and Medical Center. It belongs to our city. This is for us, for our care here. And I want you to understand that so many of the people who are absolutely concerned tonight, and I understand their concerns, but I have to tell you, once the tower went up and once the parking structure went in before, we had a tremendous positive, you know, absolute overflowing of people from the community saying, we're so happy that you did this and we're so happy with how it turned out. And I have not seen a single person yet who's come out of our beautiful new emergency room saying, gosh, I wish you still had the same old place with the curtains and four beds in a room. And no one upstairs who has their own private room saying, gosh, could I share with the 80-year-old person who's complaining in the bed next door? I really miss that. So I want you to think that perhaps there really is space here and we have the best interests of the community at heart, and all of our 520 doctors are supporting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Grossman. Dr. Grossman, only because I think it's so ironic, not that you would necessarily know this, but you delivered my son.
I remember.
And thank you for a wonderful experience. Dr. Paul Finkel, followed by Rick Horne, followed by Mr. Nick Kidway.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Paul Finkel. I reside in Westlake Village. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners and Staff. Tonight I'm speaking in favor of the proposed building project. I'd like to say at the outset that I've been a physician here in our community for 36 years. Most of my children were raised here. Some of those children, my wife and myself, have at one time or another been patients at Los Robles Hospital. When I first came out to this area in 1974, the sign on the freeway said that the population of Thousand Oaks was about 45,000, as I recall. Now the greater Caneo Valley area is in excess of 150,000 or 60,000 people. When I first came to Los Robles Hospital in 1974, we had 224, 223 beds or so. Now, 40 or so years later, we still have practically functioning, the equivalent number of about 224 plus or minus beds. This is related to the inaccessible use of semi-private rooms because of constraints, as mentioned earlier, about infectious disease and so forth. Not only do we have the same number of rooms, but the rooms are vintage 1968 as opposed to 2010. And patients who've been to the hospital in the new wing enjoy the experiences best one can at the hospital because the amenities that are available are state-of-the-art. The proposed building structure will have this type of state-of-the-art available facilities in the rooms. We've heard enough tonight about the seismic constraints and why the hospital has to do this or it will be under the threat of closure. I'm not going to go there. I am going to say that I think it is incredible that we're fortunate enough in our community to have HCA present a quarter of a billion dollars to promote this. With regard to the question of the increased number of beds by the conclusion of the project, it's clear that the demographics of our community mandate increasing demands and needs for beds. State-of-the-art facilities require expansion to provide immediate care for things such as strokes, heart attacks, trauma, and so forth. I would like to say that, because I have not much time, that it is my strong opinion that there's a firm responsibility of the city planners as well as our individual citizens to look not only to the immediate years but to the future decades to ensure that any proposed project, such as this current one, will meet the anticipated ever-increasing needs medically of our greater Caneo Valley as well to meet the needs of the aging and growing population. I thank you for your consideration. I urge your favorable decision.
Questions of Speaker? If not, our next speaker is Rick Horne, followed by Nick Kidway, followed by Carol Freeman.
Hello, my name is Rick Horne. I am resident of 191 West Sidley, directly adjacent to the old wing and proposed new wing. I'm a small business owner, and more importantly, I am a loving husband and a doting father of two young adorable children who were born at Los Robles Hospital. I wanted to try and put a face to this today, and out of respect for your time, I, do I have the ability to show any pictures? And if I put it here? I went, but I wanted to address a couple of things, and out of respect for time, out of the things that have been mentioned, one was privacy, the impact on the community, the traffic, as well as the noise, and impurity values, which have already been mentioned. At the opportunity to go to the meeting on Thursday, I did receive a letter at the end of April regarding this meeting at the hospital, and I had two questions going in there. One was, what was the impact of the existing structure on Sidley and the residents there? The answer was, they're not aware. The second question was, as it relates to options on building out, why not tier it? Why not level it and make it less intrusive or obtrusive? And the question was, we don't have enough room. So are we out of options? But I wanted to put a face on this, and I think what's been misrepresented is the impact in the community to the residents in the surrounding area. And I want to show you one picture, and would it be shown here? To show these?
You can, yes, it's perfect.
Can you see it? And that's taken, you have the luxury of coming into my home and looking out of my bedroom window. And the view as you see it, and this is an evening shot, of which, if you can make sense of, is, there isn't a night that I go to bed that I don't have to shut my windows, shut my shades. It's obvious, it's there, and I've seen none of that addressed by the hospital or anybody leading into this. That being said, the other questions, the visual, I've got other pictures which I'll leave behind, is in the community showing how this is not from street level, looking up at a perfect angle to hide it, but get up in a bedroom, get to the house behind, I've got siesta, I've got lost floors, and it'll show a different picture than what you're seeing. In closing, I think you've seen 36 speakers, or you will see 36 speakers. I think there's many more in attendance, but there's also what I saw in the community. And I want to add that I've been here five years as a resident on Sidley. I have a small business for eight years, but I'm a big part of the community, and my kids are even a bigger part of that community. Is that a lot of people in the community feel like this is a lost hope, that they don't want to come out, they're tired of this, they've seen it over and over. So I can't speak to the history, everyone else can, but I can tell you it's the future of the city. I'm greatly concerned with this proposal, and I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Questions of Speaker? Our next speaker will be Mr. Nick Kidway. I don't see that he's here in attendance, so our next speaker will be Carol Freeman, followed by David Walter, followed by Tim Schneider. Hello.
Hello. I'm Carol Freeman, a resident of Thousand Oaks for many years. In fact, I'm rather struck tonight because I'm an original employee of Los Robles Hospital, the first wing. Who would have thought in that year that we would be in the dilemma we are in this evening? As the town grew, the hospital grew. The hospital didn't grow to create a demand, the demand created the hospital. Public safety and state law demand that the general acute care hospitals throughout the state must meet seismic requirements for obvious reasons in public safety that I think you can all imagine. At the time of a disaster, you must have your hospital left intact and able to function. We know we'll have an earthquake, we just don't know exactly when. I was there in 1994, I know the damage. I know it probably wouldn't stand a 7.0, which is predicted, because that'd be almost twice as big as the one we had in 94. Having worked in the hospital industry most all of my career, not quite, there are a couple of critical things I think need to be considered. That is the seismic safety and the need for a hospital in this community. I'm sure that the hospital would rather spend $250 million on something else, but as a pragmatist, the new hospital must be built, the expansion. And the hospital is where it is, good or bad decision in 1965 to 68, when it was built. Not much option for moving, perhaps, and certainly by 2013, not much time. One might say, don't build as many beds, but if you've ever been on a gurney for a few hours or a few days waiting for that bed upstairs, that isn't an option. Right now, there are about 12,000 seniors somewhere around in this community. By 2030, there's going to be 25,000 and growing. 50% of all patients in our hospital are over the age of 65. We need those extra beds. I don't envy your job tonight, but the primary role of the City Planning Commission and City Council is to know that community needs are met and met correctly. I ask that you do what it takes to achieve a balance of necessity from desires against need. Please do so with a voice of reason. I'll remind you that by 2013, we face a possibility, and if no action tonight, probability of no licensed hospital in the city of Thousand Oaks. Any questions?
Thank you. Our next speaker, David Walter, followed by Tim Snyder, followed by Jean Marie Cole.
Hi, I'm Dave Walter, 47-year resident of Thousand Oaks, and I live on 1988 Oberlin Avenue. I'm also the number-one agent for sale in Thousand Oaks for the Board of Realtors since 1993. I am definitely concerned about the financial impact of this development on the neighboring homes. There's no doubt that visually, this is a high impact for all the homes around the immediate vicinity, Young Avenue, Janes Road, Sidley Street. I saw, based on the renderings, beautiful landscaping done to mitigate the view of the parking structure against Lynn Road and the open space. And also another picture showing the hospital coming from the south side, looking from Sidley Street. We had a clear view of the proposed hospital with very little greenscaping to hide it. I found that very ironic. The homeowners of Sidley Street, Van Dyke, Teasdale, Avenue de los Flores, et cetera, will have a huge impact visually and, of course, will definitely hurt their property values. Definitely should be part of the planning of this complex to help add a lot more vegetation to help block the structure. If you could do it commensurate to what you're doing to the parking structure, I think that would really help out tremendously. I'm also tremendously concerned about the traffic. Everybody's already gone through great detail on that. I would suggest if the neighbors at the west end of Sidley propose again to close off Sidley to Lynn Road, that you approve it. I think that would be a tremendous benefit to that neighborhood. It would immediately raise the value of all those homes overnight, potentially by a good 5% increase just by blocking off that street. Sidley Street should not be a pass-through street for this development. Right now it is, and with the proposal, it would be probably tripled or quadrupled from what you see the traffic right now. In addition to this, I want to show some additional pictures. You can't see it too well. That's my house on Oberlin Avenue. It's a great home overlooking the city. I have the hospital dead in my view. The hospital is very prominent in the view, and it's obviously a huge part of my view looking off the back of the house. The vegetation I talked about increasing in no way will help my view. Ultimately, the view at night is completely thrown by, of course, what I consider light pollution of the structure. What I'd like to ask, and what you've received, is a proposal from a landscaper to add eucalyptus trees along my lower slope. I have 1/3 acres, and my lower slope can accommodate a number of them to try to mitigate the look of this structure. So while you guys are doing a good job, or at least working on it towards mitigating it for the neighbors, I'd like to have something to help me with mine.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Any questions of Speaker? If not, our next one is Tim Snyder, followed by Jean Marie Cole, followed by Jackie Truding.
Good evening. I'm Tim Schneider. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for about 15 years. I live on West Sidley Street. I have some concerns, like everyone else, about this project, I guess. Main thing is, the answer is, we have two hospitals in this community. We need two hospitals in Caneo Valley, and they had one in Westlake and they closed it. And we're talking about demographics increasing, the population of elders, and we need more beds. Well, the answer is, we have a hospital in Westlake. That's what should be developed. That's where the expansion should be. It's already an industrial area. It's not being built in a residential area. That's your answer. That should be considered, and it's not even on the table. So I think the commission should look into that. Another big concern I have is a groundwater problem. When the last expansion occurred, Los Robles, my house became a swamp. I had to spend over $100,000 last year to eradicate this water, and I directly attribute it to the last expansion of Los Robles. And I think if you poll the people on Sidley Street, they're going to find, you'll find that the water increased during the last expansion. And I'd like some, a bond posted by the hospital, they're going to go forward with this plan, that there won't be any more increased water damage to the houses on Sidley. I think that's a major consideration that needs to be addressed. Removal of oak trees, a couple of legend oak trees. I think a bond should be posted for those trees, that for a five- or 10-year period, that these trees survive after they're transplanted. We're Thousand Oaks, you know, that's the name of our communities, Oaks, and now we're going to talk about removing trees? Just, you know, the phase of the plan, you're going to build out the hospital, and then you're going to come in with a parking structure towards the end of the plan? Build the parking structure, I mean, if you're going to have needs for parking, you've got to build a parking lot first before you expand. Also, four and a half stories, I mean, isn't the code in Thousand Oaks three stories? I know Amgen, they wanted to build up their properties, and they're in an industrial area, and they couldn't expand up to four stories. But now we're going to put four stories in a residential neighborhood? Just doesn't make sense. I mean, there's a need for a hospital in the community, there's no doubt, but I think there's really a need for two hospitals. That's originally the way it was planned, and now HCA came in, bought it out, the competition, shut it down, and now they're trying to just expand on a small piece of property, and it just, the growth, it just can't be sustained there. So I'd like to recommend the commission to oppose this.
Thank you. Questions of Speaker? I did, was brought to my attention that two names that I called had already spoken, so, and that's Jean Marie Cole has already spoken and Jackie Truding. So then we'll go to Marilyn Graben, followed by Gary Shepherd and John Williams. Oh, I'm sorry, I was checking some cards. We don't have Marilyn Graben. How about Gary Shepherd or John Williams?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Williams. I live in Thousand Oaks, and I represent... And I represent our street as well. I know some of our neighbors have already been here. But one of the things that has been neglected over the years with the last expansion, and I, you know, even if nothing happens, is that the sound walls along Lynn Road on both sides of the road should be raised five feet or so to cut down on the impact on the houses, you know, on both sides of that area, the Campbell, the Campbell residents, as well as the Ferndales, et cetera. We have gone through the past expansion. My wife can't spend time in her backyard, could not during that time because of the dust and the noise. And I know we've heard this before. The fact that we do have another hospital that can be expanded to, we can retrofit, I think there are some ways to get to this, whether they say a reduced scope project. And if this entire project was delayed for maybe a few weeks so that the, so that the neighborhood, this community that really lives here, and yes, we love the hospital too, can have a little bit more of a say in the infrastructure and the configuration, I think we'll have a happier community. We do have helicopters fly directly over our house, even though there is a route through the Baranca. That's a, you know, that's a nighttime thing, but it's just another thing that hasn't been mentioned. And the fact that we're considering six-laning Lynn Road tells me that we might as well make it a 405. Now, that's exaggeration, but that is a residential street, and people live along both sides of Lynn Road. And to cut down that median for the trees, which absorb a lot of the air pollution, et cetera, are considered to be cut down, is, I think, just, it's another step towards San Fernando Valley. And I really hope that we do not consider six-laning Lynn Road. That's the key to my heart on this one. And I think, you know, in summary, I think something can be worked out, but I think we have other options that we can really consider here before we jump into this thing. We've had many years to do the seismic study, and all of a sudden, we're knee-jerking into a seismic reason to go ahead with this hospital, and I think it's more of a fabricated reason. I believe we should really give this some good hard thought before we jump in and try to put 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. And I guess that's it.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment. We'll, oh, we have one additional speaker.
Good morning. Forgive me. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. We've heard a lot of information here tonight. I'm a member of the Oak Park community. I've been in this community for over 35 years and a local business innkeeper and general manager of a 24/7 operation for over 20 years in Westlake Village. I can speak very confidently and most recently from a very personal relationship that I had with Los Robles. My father, a little bit over six months ago, was in severe cardiac duress. And one of the reasons that he had moved here, right off of Avenida de los Arboles, was because there was a local hospital of such high caliber. I can guarantee you that if the hospital had been over-impacted, the ER, if my father had had to go to a neighboring city, such as St. John's or Siney or what have you, he would not have survived. You've heard tonight from members that have been on the front line, valued doctors, volunteers, thank you, angels on earth for your volunteerism, and those that really know how our city is being currently impacted. We have to pay attention to that. We have second and third generations that have moved here, have remained here, and are sustaining based upon our quality of life. We have a thriving community, a university city. We would be compromising our own residents if we didn't ensure the quality of health care. Most attractive to most cities, whether you are retiring, whether you're relocating, I know that real estate agents will attest that it's the quality of health care. My father certainly had exceptional care. They come to the hospital sicker as elderly's, and they end up staying longer. The reality is, people are getting sick. We do have a growing and aging community that we have to be responsible for. I know that the integrity of this city, certainly its city residents, and I know the quality of the Los Robles administration will work amicably for a common resolve. I implore you to support our community's health care by supporting this expansion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then one last speaker, Dr. Dev.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Dr. Vishwa Dev. I'm the Medical Director of Cardiovascular Services at the Los Robles Hospital.
May you also just add your city of residence, please?
I'm of Thousand Oaks, California.
Thank you.
I'm here this evening to implore you to approve the project proposed by the Los Robles Hospital. The heart program at Los Robles is one of the finest in the country. Not big, just a good program. That's because we have a great dedicated staff, which lives locally. Also, we are housed in one of the finest facilities and have state-of-the-art technology. We are lucky to be in the new building. Those of you who have visited the new tower and the old know the difference. One of the major problems that we face in taking care of sick patients with heart disease is the gridlock in the hospital that happens during peak season. We can't move the patients to the place where they can get the appropriate care. And a few more beds would make that feasible. That would not increase the number of patients that we take care of, just will make sure that we take care of our existing patients better. As such, this project is not as much an expansion project as it is a replacement of the old facility with a new facility. The old facility was built in 1970s with the then-technology, the then-safety measures, and the limitations of the medical technology available then. It's being replaced, in the proposal, by a modern, brand-new facility with state-of-the-art I think this community deserves no less. There have been some ideas about retrofitting the old building. The old building is just not adequate. It's not built the right way. It has the limitations of the 1970s and the 20th century technology. And to move to 21st century, we need a modern facility with the current technology. Not only should we approve this project, the community should insist that it is actually completed expeditiously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comments. We are going to take a seven-minute break, and we'll be back at, what would that make? That 38? At 10:38.
Okay, I'm not sure which, um, which member of city staff would like to start.
I'll go first.
Okay, thank you.
And sort of hit some of the general things and then we'll get more specific. I'm not sure if I get everything, but, um, I'll do my best. I know there was a question about setbacks. Um, the parking structure from the property line on Jan's is forty-three feet and... And on Lynn Road, it's thirty-five, twenty-seven feet. That's to the lower level. And I think there was some confusion because in the PowerPoint, um, the measurement was to the center line of the street. The construction workers will park in, um, in the soccer field parking lot over, uh, on Canal Creek South and they will, um, get to the hospital by a shuttle. The total number of beds at project completion will be three hundred and thirty-seven. Uh, there was a comment regarding Amgen. Amgen, uh, there's a specific plan that was approved for Amgen and there are office buildings and parking structures that are over three stories high. Also, there was a question about, um, I think how many phases, which phase would they need to build to meet the seismic requirements? Um, and this would be phases A1 and A2. And that would, um, add one hundred and eleven beds and relocate the hundred and four beds from the hospital, the original hospital, building A. I think that's all my comments and, um, Rick Burgess will now answer some of the environmental questions.
I will attempt to answer some of the environmental questions. There were a lot of them. Um, one of the first things I think I should mention is how the city typically looks at, uh, viewshed impacts. Um, a lot of people were concerned because we felt that the impact from, um, Sidley and, and points north of the hospital was not a significant impact. And the way we look at impacts, at least from an environmental perspective, is if they result in silhouetting on ridge lines, if they block views of distant ridge lines from core areas of the city, or if they impact C designated scenic highways, and since none of those are at play in that area, um, that's why we considered that not a significant impact. It's not to say that those, um, that building structure is not going to be very visible from that area. The other thing I did want to mention is that, uh, normally when we do these viewshed perspectives for, um, environmental review, we do not look at every single perspective there is and we don't normally look at, um, individual homes because there are infinite numbers of perspectives. So we look at a general area and that's what we've done here. Um, in regard to the parking structure and the viewshed issues with that, um, I think it was mentioned it's set back seventy-five to eighty feet from Lynn Road right away and about forty-five feet from Jan's Road right away. So, and because it is on a slope, um, from Lynn Road, you're getting a three to four level perspective and from Jan's Road, about a two level perspective. And that is also because it is, um, it is, there are two levels that are subterranean. Uh, another thing we wanted to, um, we wanted to try and, and deal with the glare on the site and so we have provided that the roof not be illuminated at night. And we're going to use motion sensitive lighting in the structure. And there will be birmingham and additional planting along Lynn and Jan's Road to provide additional screening. So our feeling is that, uh, the parking structure will not produce a significant impact at all. Um, in regard to the new patient wing and the fourth floor addition, um, the maximum height of the, um, the new patient wing is sixty-four point five feet to the top of the, um, equipment screen. It's a hundred and ninety feet from the nearest house and a hundred and eight feet from the nearest rear yard. And, um, in addition, there's a, there's a hill twenty-five to fifty feet of landscaped slope, uh, between the hospital and the residences and, um, there's a six-foot-high masonry screen wall at the top of that. Uh, the windows facing the residences are between a hundred and ninety-five to two hundred and seventy-five feet away. Therefore, we don't think privacy is an issue there. Um, and they will be tinted to prevent glare. Also, there's landscape planters that will be enlarged on the hospital site and they're going to be, uh, transplanting pines that are forty feet in height to that area. So that should really help in screening from that area. A question was asked about what tree removals would be involved and, um, in terms of the landscape trees, seventy-five will be removed, fifty-six will be relocated and eighty-four will be preserved in place. And this will be mitigated through the planning of fifty-three new trees and relocation of fifty-six. Uh, the reason that, uh, there are not as many trees being planted as were being removed is that, um, there are a number of trees within the, um, footprint of the parking, well, they were actually in the parking lot, existing parking lot where the parking structure is going to go. And that means there's simply no place to plant those trees. Um, carbon monoxide came up as an issue. Uh, we definitely looked at carbon monoxide. We always do. Um, however, carbon monoxide is not a real problem in this area and in fact, it normally isn't a problem except in incredibly congested areas in central cities and usually in the winter times. So carbon monoxide is almost never a problem and it is not a problem in Thousand Oaks. Um, in terms of air quality, however, um, we were over the twenty-five pound per day threshold of significance, uh, which the Ventura County APCD uses. Uh, we were actually one point six four pounds per day for reactive organic compounds and point eight two pounds per day for nitrogen oxides. And that means that they have to, um, contribute to a TDM fund to mitigate that. I should point out that the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District, uh, reviewed our EIR and looked at our air quality section and found it was, um, absolutely acceptable. Um, some concerns about noise increase and in actuality, the noise in the area has increased over time. It's now, um, on the order of seventy and above, a little bit above seventy along Lynn Road there. Um, that's a pretty, um, high noise, uh, level. However, the hospital only contributes, we, in from our noise study, uh, only contributes point two decibels to that level. And that's completely imperceptible. Um, our threshold at the seventy decibel ambient noise level, is it, I hope this is making sense, um, is actually point five. This got point two, so it's below that threshold. So, um, we, the, the hospital is not going to make a significant increase to the noise in the area. Um, some concerns about groundwater and that's, that certainly has been a concern in the past. Um, there were three borings done for the, um, parking structure site and, um, groundwater was, was encountered in two of those borings. Um, the lowest or the, um, lowest floor of the parking structure will be ten feet above that, um, highest reported groundwater depth in that area. There are also borings done for the new wing location and, um, there were two borings in that area and both of them found water. And the lowest floor of the new, uh, wing is eighteen feet above the highest recorded groundwater depth in that area as well. Um, we don't think the hospital will increase surface water because, um, they will use, uh, onsite stormwater detention and that's become a, a much more significant issue over the last few years. Uh, so there will be no increase in stormwater flow, surface flow. Um, the higher levels that some individuals mentioned in regard to reactive organic compounds and nitrogen oxides were actually from construction, um, air quality issues. Those are not counted towards a twenty-five pound per day because they are temporary. So that's where that came from. And, um, some people wondered why we didn't, uh, mention or deal with property values in the EIR and, and that's according to CEQA not an environmental issue. Not to say it isn't important, it just isn't dealt with in EIRs. Uh, removal of oak trees. There will be one oak tree, um, preserve, or one oak tree removed, I'm sorry. One oak tree transplanted and the rest will all be preserved. And there will be three with, um, minor encroachments within their protected, protected zones. And I think that is it unless you can think of something that I forgot. So, um, I believe now we're going to go to, uh, traffic?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, back to Lori.
Sorry, um, there was a couple of things that I forgot to mention. Um, someone brought up, um, zoning and, and land use and the land use is being changed to be consistent with the hospital. And also accompanying that, um, which is commercial to institutional, the zoning is being changed or being requested to be changed from CO to PL because above-ground multi-level parking structures are not permitted in the CO zone. Um, second item I have is, um, a revision of condition two twelve, which is the parking structure lighting condition. And, um, this is a little bit more specific than what we have.
In the soccer field parking lot over on Caneo's Creek South. And they will get to the hospital by a shuttle. The total number of beds at project completion will be 337. There was a comment regarding Amgen. Amgen, there's a specific plan that was approved for Amgen. And there are office buildings and parking structures that are over three stories high. Also, there was a question about, I think, how many phases, which phase would they need to build to meet the seismic requirements? And this would be phases A1 and A2. And that would add 111 beds and relocate the 104 beds from the hospital, the original hospital, building A. I think that's all my comments. And Rick Burgess will now answer some of the environmental questions.
I will attempt to answer some of the environmental questions. There were a lot of them. One of the first things I think I should mention is how the city typically looks at viewshed impacts. A lot of people were concerned because we felt that the impact from Sidley and points north of the hospital was not a significant impact. And the way we look at impacts, at least from an environmental perspective, is if they result in silhouetting on ridge lines, if they block views of distant ridge lines from core areas of the city, or if they impact designated scenic highways. And since none of those are at play in that area, that's why we considered that not a significant impact. It's not to say that those, that building structure is not going to be very visible from that area. The other thing I did want to mention is that normally when we do these viewshed perspectives for environmental review, we do not look at every single perspective there is. And we don't normally look at individual homes because there are infinite numbers of perspectives. So we look at a general area, and that's what we've done here. In regard to the parking structure and the viewshed issues with that, I think it was mentioned, it's set back 75 to 80 feet from Lynn Road right away, and about 45 feet from Jan's Road right away. So, and because it is on a slope, from Lynn Road, you're getting a three to four level perspective, and from Jan's Road, about a two level perspective. And that is also because it is, it is, there are two levels that are subterranean. Another thing we wanted to, we wanted to try and deal with the glare on the site. And so we have provided that the roof not be illuminated at night. And we're going to use motion sensitive lighting in the structure. And there will be birmingham and additional planting along Lynn and Jan's Road to provide additional screening. So our feeling is that the parking structure will not produce a significant impact at all. In regard to the new patient wing and the fourth floor addition, the maximum height of the new patient wing is 64.5 feet to the top of the equipment screen. It's 190 feet from the nearest house and 108 feet from the nearest rear yard. And in addition, there's a hill, 25 to 50 feet, a landscaped slope between the hospital and the residences. And there's a six-foot-high masonry screen wall at the top of that. The windows facing the residences are between 195 to 275 feet away. Therefore, we don't think privacy is an issue there. And they will be tinted to prevent glare. Also, there's landscape planters that will be enlarged on the hospital site, and they're going to be transplanting pines that are 40 feet in height to that area. So that should really help in screening from that area. A question was asked about what tree removals would be involved. And in terms of the landscape trees, 75 will be removed, 56 will be relocated, and 84 will be preserved in place. And this will be mitigated through the planting of 53 new trees and relocation of 56. The reason that there are not as many trees being planted as were being removed is that there are a number of trees within the footprint of the parking, well, they were actually in the parking lot, existing parking lot where the parking structure is going to go. And that means there's simply no place to plant those trees. Carbon monoxide came up as an issue. We definitely looked at carbon monoxide. We always do. However, carbon monoxide is not a real problem in this area. And in fact, it normally isn't a problem, except in incredibly congested areas in central cities, and usually in the winter times. So carbon monoxide is almost never a problem. And it is not a problem in Thousand Oaks. In terms of air quality, however, we were over the 25 pound per day threshold of significance, which the Ventura County APCD uses. We were actually 1.64 pounds per day for reactive organic compounds and 0.82 pounds per day for nitrogen oxides. And that means that they have to contribute to a TDM fund to mitigate that. I should point out that the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District reviewed our EIR and looked at our air quality section and found it was absolutely acceptable. Some concerns about noise increase. And in actuality, the noise in the area has increased over time. It's now on the order of 70 and above, a little bit above 70 along Lynn Road there. That's a pretty high noise level. However, the hospital only contributes, in from our noise study, only contributes 0.2 decibels to that level. And that's completely imperceptible. Our threshold at the 70 decibel ambient noise level, I hope this is making sense, is actually 0.5. This got 0.2, so it's below that threshold. So we, the hospital is not going to make a significant increase to the noise in the area. Some concerns about groundwater, and that certainly has been a concern in the past. There were three borings done for the parking structure site, and groundwater was encountered in two of those borings. The lowest, or the lowest floor of the parking structure will be 10 feet above that, highest reported groundwater depth in that area. There are also borings done for the new wing location. And there were two borings in that area, and both of them found water. And the lowest floor of the new wing is 18 feet above the highest recorded groundwater depth in that area as well. We don't think the hospital will increase surface water because they will use onsite stormwater detention. And that's become a much more significant issue over the last few years. So there will be no increase in stormwater flow, surface flow. The higher levels that some individuals mentioned in regard to reactive organic compounds and nitrogen oxides were actually from construction, air quality issues. Those are not counted towards the 25 pound per day because they are temporary. So that's where that came from. And some people wondered why we didn't mention or deal with property values in the EIR. And that's, according to CEQA, not an environmental issue. Not to say it isn't important, it just isn't dealt with in the EIRs. Removal of oak trees. There will be one oak tree preserved, or one oak tree removed, I'm sorry, one oak tree transplanted, and the rest will all be preserved. And there will be three with minor encroachments within their protected zones. And I think that is it, unless you can think of something that I forgot. So I believe now we're going to go to traffic?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, back to Lori.
Sorry, there was a couple of things that I forgot to mention. Someone brought up zoning and land use. And the land use is being changed to be consistent with the hospital. And also accompanying that, which is commercial to institutional, the zoning is being changed, or being requested to be changed from CO to PL because above-ground, multi-level parking structures are not permitted in the CO zone. Second item I have is a revision of condition 212, which is the parking structure lighting condition. And this is a little bit more specific than what we have in the staff report. So I'd like to read it. Says the lighting at rooftop of parking structure shall be limited to provide security lighting and shall be controlled by daylight sensors and shields as necessary. In addition, the rooftop parking shall be closed by 30 minutes past dusk and reopened by dawn. That's it.
Okay, is there questions of staff? Commissioner Adams?
Thank you. This is a hypothetical question. I hope you can attempt to answer it at any rate, and anybody can chime in here, including Mr. Town. So we're being, as far as the seismic requirements, we're being told that the fourth floor is needed on the existing wing and three floors, up to half of the third floor on the proposed new wing, plus the emergency room beds. I would give it's 277 beds and require the seismic requirements, correct?
Okay.
I think we've already established that. My question is, if you, if you built on the proposed building, if you built out that third floor and added those 22 beds that are not called for, if you built that third floor out, would you then need the third, or the fourth floor on the existing wing?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, you would need the fourth floor.
On the existing wing?
Yes.
Even if you, even if you built the third floor out on the proposed wing?
You still have to build out the third floor of the new patient care wing because that will get you up to... You still need to add 16 new beds.
You'd still be short.
You'd still be short, so you need that.
Okay.
Because they're adding 76 beds in Phase A5, so subtract 60 from that. 16 will bring you up to 277, which was what they were approved for.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Any other questions of staff? And Mr. Town was telling me that we thought we had traffic that had some additional comments. Would traffic like to come back with some responses?
Good evening. Hi, I'm Scott Schell with Associated Transportation Engineers. And we worked with city staff in preparing the traffic and parking studies that went into the EIR. Beth got to do all of the talking last time, so I figured I'd jump in here at the late hour, the relief pitcher, as it were. We kind of made some notes and just went through some major topic areas that we thought we hit on. The first one was sort of the issue of the Sidley cut-through traffic and what we might expect for that. One of the first things I did when we, when I heard the discussions about it tonight was just to see if there was much of an existing issue or a problem. And in looking at the traffic counts that we had taken out at Sidley and Jan's, excuse me, Sidley and Lynn, there was only 11 cars that went up Lynn and turned down Sidley during the peak hour. So to us, there isn't a big cut-through issue there now. Same thing happened the morning peak. There were 14 cars that were heading north and sort of went around the corner, if you will. So we, really, the counts don't show us that there's a big issue with it now. And then in looking to the future with the restrictions of the left turn down at the medical office driveway, if you add up what you have to do to circumvent that system, you've got to either come south and go through five intersections to get back around the horn all the way back over to Young and Jan's, you know, one signal and a couple of stop signs. I think the suggestion from Commissioner Adams is a good one to look at internal signage to make sure that as people come out of the new garage or out of the existing parking lots, they have a clear indication that they need to go back over to the other driveway to get out is the first step that we would do. And talking with Beth about it, I think we also agreed that there probably needs to be a condition that monitors that driveway in the future if the left turn restriction is in place. So we would go back over to the medical office driveway after the restriction is in place there and look at the medical center driveway to see if traffic signals are required. So it'd be a warrant analysis in the future if we were to place the restriction at the office driveway. And Beth has sort of written some notes on that potential additional condition. There was a discussion about the accidents on Jan's and the experience that was recorded. We got the records from the city. And I think we heard testimony, there was 11 recorded accidents in that stretch. And the bulk of them were concentrated at the intersection of the medical office driveway. And seven of those were directly involved, the left turns turning out from that driveway onto Jan's. And that, that really led to our recommendation to restrict that movement to solve that safety issue. There was a question about would this, all of this new traffic be concentrated on that medical office driveway where the accident potential or problem is now? And I think we see it as a little different. I think the traffic is going to shift around because the new parking structure, which is going to be built on that corner, is going to be used for employees. And so it's really going to have a kind of a much lower turnover, and have those two shifts a day, we'll have shift changes. But in terms of the day-to-day activity that you see there now, we're not going to have that at that structure. Essentially going to free up all of the employee parking that's in the existing structure. So a lot of the patient and visitor parking is going to be focused over there as we see the expansion. There was also a question about opening up the intersection at Lynn and Medical Center. And we did look at that in the traffic study in the EIR. We found that there would be some traffic diversion to that if it were to be done. A couple of consequences, there would have to be some pretty significant vegetation and landscape removal of the median to install the brake and to install the left turn lane. We also found that traffic signals would be required there, given the speed of the road and the anticipated volumes. So it was kind of a trade-off. We've got sort of the expense and the loss of landscaping for a trade-off of some improvements down at Jan and Lynn intersection. But we didn't feel that the trade-off was enough to justify that cost and that expense. The levels of service got better by a little bit, and some traffic would move over there. But in terms of the balance, we felt that the existing system could work. And just to remind you, all the future forecasts at Jan and Lynn's found that we would maintain the city's level of service C there, even with full build-out and all of the project developed. But I think those were the main points I had and some of our sort of brainstorming responses to them.
Any questions of traffic? Okay, Mr. Town, did you have some final comments to make?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, relatively specific one. We heard comments about the slope on the north side of the hospital and the potential need or desire for additional landscaping. Staff had looked at that slope and the city's landscape architect consultant had looked at that slope. And at that point in the review process, did not feel that there was adequate room for significant additional landscape plantings on it or on the flat area immediately north of the proposed parking. We did discuss this, though, in the context of additional comments that we heard tonight. And staff and the consultant will review that landscape slope a second time to see if there are opportunities for additional landscaping on the slope to help screen the proposed structure, the proposed four-story wing to the north of the existing building. And I obviously know the site, I've looked at it, and we feel that there may be some opportunities there that warrant further review. There's already a requirement for city review of the final landscape plan, so the commission does not necessarily need to change conditions. Right now, it's a conceptual approval of the landscape plan, and so staff will include that in their final review. There were a couple of comments about public notice. The public notice for this project went out according to code requirements for all residents in terms of a notice of application within 500 feet of both of the parcels where the hospital expansion is proposed, as well as the parking structure. Those notices go out at least 45 days prior to the first hearing. That is also accompanied by a large sign that has been on site for well over 45 days. And then at the time of the hearing, there is an additional public hearing notice, which also was sent out. The EIR for this project, the draft EIR has been on the city website since March 5th. So that has been available for public review as well. Finally, the idea of a master plan. This is, again, condition number five for the special use permit major modification. A number of the comments we heard today, part of which were addressed by our traffic consultants. Those are also ideas, both in terms of street circulation and internal circulation, that will be evaluated as part of that master plan. As I think all of us know in this room tonight, the properties that include those owned by the hospitals, as well as the properties to the west that are owned by multiple different parties, really are linked to some degree, either directly or indirectly, in terms of circulation of vehicles, circulation of pedestrians, building intensity, et cetera. So the idea of a master plan, I think, is an important one. It's within the conditions of approval at this time. And the ideas that were brought up tonight from the public in terms of signal location and pedestrian routes, et cetera, those are the types, exactly the types of things that will be looked at in this master plan. So those were my comments at this time, and thank you.
Again, I'm just going to ask one last time, any questions of staff? Okay, now we're going to go back to our applicant, Mr. Engel. You'll have five minutes for any additional comments that you'd like to make.
Just a couple of things I want to address. First is that there was a question as to, you know, whether this was a new plan, that something that we had created. But in all reality, we started back in 1999, master planning for the campus to address the seismic regulations. And we looked at a variety of different options, both on campus and also in answer to another question. You know, we do, we do have the option of potentially developing the Westlake property that has been referenced here many times tonight. The problem with that property is it's a very small acreage. The city is uninterested in allowing multi-story development there. The practical reality is having multiple hospitals would require a duplication of most major services. It frankly wasn't working very well then. I doubt that it would work very well now. The services that would be required for a patient to be seen in acute care fashion there would largely be dependent upon the main campus at Los Robles. In any event, we'd be shuttling patients back and forth. Patients would be in the wrong location for the wrong procedures. It just, it isn't a workable plan, unfortunately. And although it comes to mind easily, I think also it has other implications for the medical community who would not, is not really interested in dividing themselves up again to support another emergency department, to support the 24/7 demands of another hospital. It just isn't a practical reality, nor, I think, economically feasible. A question, we did send out letters to residents within 500 feet of both properties. We did invite them to two different neighborhood sessions. We also purchased additional mailing lists to expand that list of both Lynnmere and Lynnbrook. So we did make an effort to engage the community in giving us feedback on our plan. I'd also like to just quickly say that, of course, we are sympathetic to our neighborhood and its impact. I think much in the design has gone to mitigate many of the issues that I think we had anticipated. It's, I'm sure, not a perfect plan. We're open to other suggestions that might have. But I would also just remind the commission that, of course, to view this also in the larger context of the greater community and what not approving this project could mean to all of Thousand Oaks and to the Caneo Valley, should it not, should it not pass. And lastly, I think I'll turn it over to Russ because I know that you had a question about whether we could retrofit the existing building.
Yeah, we looked early on at retrofitting the existing building. One of the big issues with retrofitting is any building built before 1973, basically, if you can retrofit, if it's feasible, which in this case it's not, you can only take that building to 2030, and then it has to go out of service just like it does at 2013. So it just buys you a little bit of time, a little bit of additional time. The main reasons it's not really feasible for this project, and to give you a little preface, the regulatory environment that is SB 953 is constantly changing. It doesn't change every month, but it changes quite a, quite a bit in pressure at the legislative, state legislature, legislature, based on the challenges you're hearing today. A lot of the financial issues of hospitals don't have the money. And so they're really pressuring the legislature to adjust the requirements. So those are happening all the time, and there certainly might be avenues in the future. But as of right now, it's not feasible for, to retrofit the project based on the impact of, on existing patient care, the construction costs, that's a simple one, the fact that we probably have to move most of the patients out of the building to do a retrofit, and it actually would extend construction, the construction period. And then the last thing I wanted to address was some specific conditions that we want to further refine in working with the city. Mr. Town mentioned one, condition 41, which is the screening. And we'd be happy to work with the city and really to respond to the local residents' issues. And we think we can address that. 156, condition 156, has to do with a payment of fees. And I think we would like those fees to be somewhere in sequence or synced up, if you will, with the development of the project in a little more detailed way. And then finally, condition 165 deals with some, what characterizes vacant space in the building. And we agree with the intent, which is to not increase or to have a condition which impacts the future development of the use of the campus, that we agree with. But the specific issues of allocating this square footage specifically and putting an encumbrance, if you will, on it is the issue.
Okay, is there any final questions of the applicant? Okay, we have one question for you from Commissioner Adams.
Hi. Just a quick question. On the 2013 date, how close are you to a date that if you started after it, you wouldn't make it? Can I put that clearly?
I hate to say that, but we're past that.
You're past the date where if you start...
We're actually right past that date. Yeah, there is the ability, after we start construction, so we're not eligible to even ask yet, but after we start construction, there is the potential to ask for an up to two more years. We wouldn't need two more years, but you can, there is a, this is one of those things that I was talking about, the regulatory environment changing constantly. It's been about a year and a half. Senate Bill 1661 actually gave us the ability, under certain, very specific conditions, to ask for up to two years.
So if you start tomorrow, you're not going to make it?
No. Well, I think, you know, remember, this project is approximately the same size as the existing building. And you heard from testimony, it takes about four years to build. Hospital construction in the state of California is heavily regulated, and compared to other building types is significantly impacted. It just takes a long time to build a hospital in California.
So you're banking on the extension, then?
We have no choice.
I mean, you couldn't very well start, yeah, okay.
In reality, by the letter of the law, in 2013, they, and we're not done, they actually can close the facility. We don't think that's going to happen, obviously.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Reynolds?
And then after you go through the planning commission, the city council, don't you have to have some type of state approval too? So you have other layers to go through?
Yeah, we couldn't wait to submit to ASHPAD. We submitted last year. We're in the middle of plan review. So any adjustments to the plans, we'll deal with that in our back check process with the state.
I have a question, Mr. Engel. Someone talked about the ambulance sirens, but isn't there a limit, an hour or some type of limit when the ambulances may use their sirens if they get so close to the hospital? Or have I just been hearing things?
I'm laughing because you have a commissioner who could probably better answer this question than I can.
Oh, you mean Commissioner Fisher? Oh.
Chief, Chris Caraway, BP Marketing at the Medical Center. That's my ability. I've always been told that there is some type of an ordinance that says once the ambulances coming from Moore Park reach Hendrix, they have to turn off their sirens.
Okay, and that's why someone in the audience had mentioned, they see the light... Okay, and that's why someone in the audience had mentioned, they see the lights, but they don't hear the sirens.
That's correct.
And that's why I was curious about that. And I would assume the helicopter really doesn't land that often.
Once, once or twice a month, on average.
I know they're noisy. I used to fly them, but in another life 40 years ago. But, okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Adam.
I'm sorry, just one more question. One of the residents brought up the business of the parking garage and the access to the upper floor with a key card. If that's the case, would that negate the upper floor being closed?
No, I think--
How does that work?
The garage itself will be reserved for employees and will be badge entry.
Yeah.
So, so then, once they leave, then the upper floor will be closed off to them.
Okay. Well, I got, I got the impression from the resident somehow there'd be a key card to that--
So to get into the garage, you need a key card, an employee key card? And then to get to the upper floor, which would be closed during the evening hours, you need, there'll be another gate to get up, to make sure that everybody leaves.
Yeah, but you're not going to be able to get through that gate with a key card, right?
Yes.
You are.
But your key card won't get you through at a certain time.
At certain times. Okay, thank you.
Okay, if we have completed all of our questions, we will go ahead and close the public hearing for commission comments and/or a motion. Oh, excuse me, Mr. Towne, do we need something additional we need to do?
I think it'll just take a moment, but the applicant did raise several conditions for further consideration. As far as condition number 41 goes, that is for the special use major modification. It's on page 67 of your packet at the bottom. I concur with the applicant, and also pursuant to my previous comments, and would recommend the following language be added to the end of condition number 41. That would say, enhanced screening shall also be implemented, to the extent feasible, on the slope nearly north of the proposed four wing structure. Okay, so that would be a sentence added to the very end of condition 41. As I previously mentioned, we already have a requirement under condition 34 that the final landscape plan is to be submitted and approved by the city, but this is a little bit more specific, condition 41. As far as condition number 165 goes, I'd like to just briefly run through the rationale for that condition. This is the one that states that the quote-unquote "vacated" space, the old hospital, cannot be used for anything beyond storage until the new structure is built, per the five-phase plan. And here's the reason for it. As we talked about earlier, 76 beds are going to be built in Phase A 5. So if your total capacity is 337 beds, minus those 76 spaces, that means that at the end of Phase A 3, you would have a capacity of 261 beds. Okay? 261 beds at the end of Phase A 3. Remember, Phase A 4 is the proposed structure, Phase A 5 is the third and fourth floors on the proposed new wing. When you use that number of beds, 261, and multiply it out times the new demand rate that is based on the 2010 parking analysis, and include 18 spaces for storage for the quote-unquote "vacated" wing, you end up with a demand of 965 spaces. Okay? So that's your demand. But in terms of supply, remember that when we add the fourth floor, or the four-story wing, I'm sorry, to this project, you will lose about 85 spaces in terms of the footprint of the new wing that are currently in use. So your supply that currently is 921 on site is reduced to 836. And to make up that difference between the sites, the actual spaces you have on site, and that demand of 965, if you only consider it for use, use as storage, it requires approximately 71 valet spaces and 58 spaces, or reduction in demand through transportation demand management. 71 valet spaces were considered by the Planning Commission in 2002 to be reasonable, and that TDM number of 58 is also reasonable. It results in a 6% amount of the overall supply accommodated through TDM. If part of that area, even half of that vacated area, is used for related office space and not for storage, it would generate, according to routine numbers, at a one-space-for-250-square-feet ratio, it'd generate about another 80 parking spaces. And the only way that can be accommodated, because of your fixed number of spaces on site and relatively fixed valet numbers, would be through more TDM, and that bumps your TDM rate up to about 14%, which is, and Mr. Schell, our consultant for traffic, can address this further if appropriate, but that's from what Mr. Schell has actually said. He's really at the upper limit in terms of the amount that can be accommodated through TDM. So that's the basis for it. Again, if the project goes forward as proposed and the structure is built, then there would be more than adequate parking without such a reliance on TDM, transportation demand management. But the way that it is right now, we feel that it's reasonable, the way this is proposed, and that's, that's the basis, the numerical basis for that condition number 165 in the way that it's worded.
Commissioner Reynolds, did you have a question you wanted to ask?
I just wondered if Mr. Towne was going to comment on condition 156.
I, I would actually have to defer to Public Works on that, when it's air quality mitigation fee payment schedule.
I think, actually, the applicant was asking about payment of all the fees for the traffic mitigation fees. The way that the condition is worded right now is that the fees would be paid in two lump sums, one prior to zoning clearance, and the second half prior to building permits for the parking structure. And those are the two approvals that the city gives. And what the applicant was asking is if that could be separated out into individual phases. I think either way would work. One, the city has more control, the other is more the honor system.
Did you, does anyone have any additional questions? Anyone at Commissioner Reynolds?
So we can go and do what we want to on that without asking the applicant if they agree, because I'm kind of getting where they do it either way? Is that okay, from the nods in the audience? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Towne, do you think you can clarify her question a little? You're okay now? Okay. Okay. Okay, if we've concluded all of our staff comments and all of our questions to staff, we can now go back to closing the public hearing and for commission discussion and Commissioner Adam.
Thank you. Okay, well, there's probably nobody in this room, including everybody on this dais, that hasn't gotten some benefit from Los Robles Hospital at one time or another. We all have stories. I mean, my kids were born there 11 years ago and spent some time in the NICU, and it's great. Everybody's nodding their head. Everybody's had experience with Los Robles in tremendous fashion. The people on Sidley and Young and Oberlin have just paid more for those benefits than the rest of us. And I, you know, I just think that they need some consideration. And so when I'm getting at, I'm just wondering if, there's, throughout this hearing, there's been a lot of questions that have been brought up that I don't think have really been answered, and things like traffic, things like, do we close, somebody brought up closing Sidley, things like a traffic light at the Medical Center Drive, things about pedestrian safety. These are questions that are, have not been answered, but they're very important because the Los Robles complex is almost like a little mini-city. And I, and I really think that the staff suggestion that there be a master plan for the, for the project is important and very well-founded. And I think the master plan has to be come up, needs to be, the participants in the master plan have to be the hospital, have to be the six property owners within the area, Dr. Turkett and all the rest, and, most importantly, the residents. Now, I know that the hospitals had community meetings within the 500 feet, but I get the feeling that maybe some of the residents weren't quite as involved as maybe they should have been. But they need to be a component, too, because this is in their, this is in their neighborhood. So my thought here, and this, this is discussion at this point, we can't turn our back on the seismic business either, as the gentleman mentioned, we're already behind the curve on the seismic requirements. We're already getting a late start. There's no getting around it. The hospital has to be seismically compliant by 2013. And who wouldn't want it to be? I mean, you know, you can't have a hospital collapse him during an earthquake. It has to be there for the, for the community, and God help the poor people that will be in it if that were to happen. I think we had some problems in the Northridge Creek. So there's no getting around that, in my mind. However, as you may have listened during the discussion, they would talk about, what does a hospital need for seismic requirements, and what are they asking for non-seismic requirements? Well, seismic requirements, and I asked Ms. Youngness, would be adding the fourth floor in the existing wing, which, by the way, this is kind of interesting, the 2002 Planning Commission reviewed this very issue, the existing wing now, and approved the three stories, but not the fourth. Thank you, 2002 Planning Commission. So here we are, looking at, anyway, here we are, 2010, looking at the fourth wing, at the fourth floor. But as many questions I asked about what would be necessary seismic versus non-seismic, it just has become clear to me that the fourth floor on the existing wing needs to be built for seismic requirements. That's, would be number one. It's also clear to me that the proposed new wing would need to be built for seismic requirements as well, but not necessarily the fourth floor on that wing. If you, if you want to call it a fact, for seismic requirements, you would need three floors at this point, three floors. And that would mean, and as you remember, five hours ago, when I asked Ms. Youngness question, for seismic requirements, the parking garage then would not necessarily have to be four stories, one ground level and three above. It could be probably a level lower. So what I'm, what I'm thinking, and you please chime in when I'm done, I'm sure you will, it would seem to me that it would make sense to recommend to the council, that we, recommend to the council, that the seismic requirements be met, which would be the fourth floor on the existing building, the three stories for the proposed building, and the parking garage, the height of the parking garage commensurate with the seismic requirements, which would presumably be lower than where it is now, to meet the, and then, okay, and here's the key, the rest of it be contingent on a master plan, a master plan for this little mini-community, a master plan that the residents, the six property owners and the hospital can get, to get together and talk about, okay, what are we going to do about the noise? What about these sound walls on Lynn Road? What about the traffic light at Medical Center Drive? What about this no left-hand turn lane? What about the internal circulation? How are people, how are we going to keep people out of Sidley? What about closing off Sidley? What about pedestrian safety? What about that sidewalk that should go in, but we got to talk to Dr. Turkett first? So many of these things remain unanswered, and it just seems to me that, that it needs to be addressed, and I can't think of a better way than to have this master plan. I think we probably should have had it all along, but I don't think it's too late. And I think it behooves the hospital, if they want to, if they want to expand, which the demographics probably do call for the expansion, but if they want to expand, let's get a master plan and do it right.
Is there some additional discussion, Commissioner Fisher?
Expand versus seismic requirements, there's a difference.
No, I certainly understand the path you're going down, and definitely agree that a master plan is needed. Should it be contingent? No, I don't think so. We're already behind the curve. Can it be in parallel? Possibly. You know, we're making a recommendation to the City Council. We recommend that they, you know, look at how to implement a master plan on a parallel track. I think any, anything you do to delay what's needed today, I mean, I guess I have an advantage working with the county in my current position of, you know, seeing the medical system. You know, many years ago, working as a paramedic out in this area, coming into the hospital, not having a bed for my patient. When the new wing finally went into effect, it was great on the medical system for emergency medical services. Prior to that, it was a daily occurrence. You would have several ambulances stacked up with patients on the gurney, nowhere to leave them, and what that does is backs up the entire county for paramedic ambulances. So going forward with this, you know, we're, we're looking at an eight-year period. After this eight years and what's proposed in front of us, I'm not totally convinced that that's going to be 100% sufficient. I think we're always going to be playing catch-up to some extent. Certainly, there's going to be some limitations, you know, after this proposal, but we're going to constantly play catch-up. I mean, let's go back to when the hospital first opened. You know, you had several thousand residents, and, you know, we've got over, what, 140, 150,000 residents during that time. You know, it's, I just don't see a point, you know, saying, well, if you do this, then we'll do that. I think we can work in concert with it. I agree 100% that the residents around the hospital have took on an enormous burden for the rest of the community. But that's what we have. That's where the hospital is. There really aren't any other options, and why wouldn't you put something in place now for the future instead of playing catch-up the entire time?
Commissioner Fisher, don't misunderstand me, though. I'm not saying a master plan would be contingent, contingent to the seismic requirements. I'm not saying that at all. I'm only talking about the expansion, the 60-bed expansion. The seismic requirements are a given in my mind. I mean, there's just no way around it. But the 60-bed expansion is optional, and a master plan that can answer some of the questions of the residents and some of the questions that come in, come up tonight, isn't going to take eight years to put together. It's something that I think that could be probably hammered out in a matter of a few months. And in the meantime, the seismic requirement business could be presumably okay by the council, and we could get started on that.
Perhaps before you respond, Commissioner Fisher, we could let Commissioner Reynolds had a comment she would like to make to add in.
Well, I just wanted to say that I agree with both of you, but I'm a lot closer to that demand that's going to be on our hospital. And I always feel that if you spend the money now, you're going to be spending a lot less money now to do it than you will in, let's say, five years down the road, that it could cost almost double of the project. I feel very bad for the neighbors. And, and I know when I moved in next to a park, I had to think that I'm living in the community as I grew up, when I saw Encino grow up, as I lived there, that things are, when, when a city grows, things have to grow. So I had to think, when I moved in close to a park, that eventually, yes, it would have a bigger use. There could be lights eventually and other activities and things going on that parcel. I don't think that you can buy a house and then just sit there and go, things are never going to change around the neighborhood. But I'm more concerned about the expense, that if it's not done now in this plan and the expense that they've already put out for their architects and just everything else, that I can just see it doubling over the years, and I'd rather just approve-- that I can just see it doubling over the years, and I'd rather just approve the project. And I can't believe that the hospital wouldn't be working with the neighbors and looking at those things. I have a great faith in people. I really, you know that, I've said that many times, that I really believe staff and I really believe people. And they want to be a part of the community, and they have to live next door, the hospital has to live next door to these neighbors, just as the neighbors have to live next door to them too. So I'm more inclined to go along with Commissioner Fisher.
Commissioner Fisher, now that I had stopped you, you had additional comments you wanted to make.
No, I follow Commissioner Adam. I totally understand what you're talking about, but where I'm coming from is looking at it the other way. Yes, the seismic has to be done, but so does that additional 65 beds. I see it. I see it every day. It truly needs to be done, and I think we can get there. I think we can achieve what you're going for with the master plan, absolutely. I think we can do it at the same time. And this is a recommendation to the council. I mean, it doesn't stop with us. You know, you've got administration at the hospital, you've got the neighbors around. There's going to be a lot more conversations going on than this meeting, so.
But I mean, I agree with both of you. The hospital's going to grow. It's inevitable. We're going to need it. We're aging, the demographics, all that stuff. But if we're going to do it, let's do it right. I mean, like I said, I'm not against the 60-bed expansion, but again, in deference to the residents, I think it really, I don't think it would be that much burden on the hospital and the six property owners to come up with a master plan that would answer a lot of these questions that came up and make this all a little more palatable. And I don't think a master plan's going to take years and years to accomplish. In fact, I'm going to ask Mr. Norman, if, I mean, a master plan sounds so daunting, ooh, the master plan, it sounds like, but it seems to me that a lot of these questions can be answered, and this master plan can maybe be achieved in a few months. And we're talking in an eight-year period to build this thing. Why don't we get off on the right foot, answer the questions that the residents have, put together the master plan as far as the optional growth that the hospital's asking for? I'm sorry, Mr. Norman, I didn't give you a chance to answer the question.
Well, a lot of it depends on what form the master plan takes and whether or not you get an agreement with your neighbors. And that sometimes takes a long time, and I don't know where that is. I don't know what relationship the hospital has with its office neighbors. So to try to force a master plan legislatively, it's feasible, I suppose, there are methods to do it, but that type of top-down approach generally doesn't work. You want a proposal to come to the city that the city can get on board with. And so it really depends on the relationship between the hospital and its neighbors. That'll dictate how long it will take, if at all.
You mean the neighbors, meaning the six property owners that are around? Well, from what I gather in the hearing, the relationship with the property owners is good. In fact, that is, oops, that business of the sidewalk with Dr. Turquet came up, and they said that Dr. Turquet was, you know, positive towards that.
One of the reasons that staff proposed a condition that a master plan be developed and that the hospital participate in it, and that's about the extent of that condition. It's difficult to force a relationship between parties from the governmental level. So again, I don't know. Maybe the relationship is good, and if there is a good relationship, then a plan can be brought forward to the city quickly. I just don't know if that's true or not. On that level, there's a lot of cooperation and agreement and sharing of costs and fees, and maybe someone wants to develop their property one way and the other property owner wants to develop another, and those don't work well together. I just don't know.
Well, then what mechanism do we have to get some of these questions answered, then?
Maybe. No, I mean, the city does have some tools. The specific plan is the general method for organizing a area where there is a commonality. And so this is, in my opinion, something where a specific plan will work. However, it's been my experience that you really need kind of an agreement among all the parties to make specific plans work well. While technically, the city council can force a specific plan, which is nothing more than a subset of a general plan, it's a legislative act, to do so without the cooperation of the owners in the plan area can be difficult. I'm not saying it's impossible, but it'd be very difficult to do, and that would have to be something that comes from the council level if the city chose to go that way. I'm not recommending that they do. I'm just telling you what my experience has been in that area.
Well, I tell you, I'm disappointed in that answer, because we're calling for a master plan, but from your answer, you're telling me that you seem very low likelihood that we're ever going to get one.
If I might make a comment and kind of jump in, I haven't made any comments yet. Perhaps a better way to get where you're trying to go is to actually hone in on some specific things that you might want to add as conditions that are here. And sometimes plans, though they sound good, doesn't end up getting you anything more than talk. Perhaps if there are some specific things from what you had heard from the testimony that was given here, that you could hone in to being a specific condition that you would like to add as a recommendation, it might end up being something, in the end, that's ultimately more effective. I mean, I do share with you that, you know, it would be wonderful and ideal to have everyone come together and they have this great agreement that they come together, but sometimes in the realities of peoples and needs, sometimes they, you know, will never meet. You know, I heard tonight one particular area of great concern having to do with traffic, and we do have some issues that have been going on on Lynn Road for a long time. And unfortunately, you know, the hospital has to bear some of that that was not their fault but had to do with the 23 freeway and people then using Lynn Road. So then you have people a little bit chapped over that whole situation going up and down Lynn Road, and here, the hospital has a need, and so now everything is blamed and put on to the hospital. I do think that as you look at expansion that's in those particular areas, you do have traffic issues. And by nature, my experience is that the city tends to be, or the mechanism for how we operate tends to be reactive and not proactive. So perhaps if, in looking at that, there is something specifically that you might have as a recommendation for city council in regards to a traffic issue, and I'm using that as an example, might have something that has a bit more teeth to it than requiring groups of people to come together, to have a conversation that might create something or not later on. And I give that to you, Commissioner Adam, as trying to be helpful.
I appreciate that.
And one of them that they were talking about was that traffic light on Lynn Road, being able to come out so that you're having an easier way for people to funnel out of that area and get back on a main thoroughfare that can connect with the freeway or, I mean, so that was one that I clearly heard.
I appreciate that notion. I mean, this whole business of the master plan and condition five, it is, it may be purposely so, it's rather amorphous the way it's written. It's quite general. And my only concern about that, and I'd be willing to list off some things, that I just would miss some stuff, frankly.
Well, and you must share that you, that a supposed group getting together, talking about it, may miss some stuff, too. So, you know, and just to add my opinion of where I am right now is, is that I'm looking to see this move on in one direction or another with a recommendation tonight when we come to conclusion that can be something that they can work on at city council for our either support. I would not like to see this carry on and drag down, because I do think the hospital is, it's a critical, vital resource for our community.
No one's arguing with that.
They need to get going on this.
No one's arguing with that. So you're saying then to me that you do agree that we do need a master plan? You wouldn't necessarily make a contingent on the expansion part of the proposal, but you would feel that it would be appropriate to put a little more teeth in number five and add some specifics to it?
My position is, I'm not really sure what a master plan means. And so though I'm understanding what Commissioner Fisher was mentioning before, I don't know what the result of what that necessarily would be. My, what I would be siding towards now is saying, let's look at what it is that has been brought before us. Either approve it in its form that it is right now, or add some additional conditions for which we think address the issues that have been brought before us here this evening. And then let's get this to the city council.
Well, I guess, I guess then, I mean, if we went along that route, you know, I would take condition five and just add some specifics based on things we've heard this evening.
For example?
Well, for example, I would, I think we should look at that light at, oh, God, what's the name of the street? The Medical Center Drive and Jan's Road, for one. I think one of the residents brought up an interesting topic about the closure of Sidley on one end, I think it was on the Lynn Road end. Was it the Lynn Road end? All right, I can't ask that. Yeah, the Lynn Road end, the closure of Sidley, that was an interesting thing to look at. Without question, the internal traffic movements within the complex itself and pedestrian, I'm telling you that, I've walked that area, that pedestrian thing needs to be addressed. There's no way they're going to get from that parking lot over to the hospital without problems.
I concur with you.
That has to be, I mean, there's not even a sidewalk there. You're supposed to walk down the street, the middle of the street.
Okay, what else?
These are the things. Let's see. Specifics, right?
I'm sorry. I don't see how we can really list all the specific things, because there's so many other things that could be brought into it. And the last line of the condition says, the applicant agrees to good faith participation in this process. And I think it works that way with all parties that would be involved in this master plan. So for us to sit and list, and what if some things are missed, and then eventually they would say, oh, that wasn't really in that condition? We're not going to bother.
Well, you're right. I don't think we can list everything. It's impossible. But I think we could say such as, some of the things we've heard tonight. And then I think there's, with this business, this master plan, we should put some sort of a, there's nothing, it just says that there should be a master plan. It doesn't say when, or should it start now, or should it start eight years from now? Shouldn't it say something about that the master plan should be concurrent?
Well, in an effort to try and help to get this to a point, what I was trying, Commissioner Reynolds, to do is to see if we could identify with Commissioner Adam some specifics. We can either vote to agree with him or not, and then we can move forward from that issue. So Commissioner Adam, can you, can, you know, I'm going to go back to making sure that you identify what those are, and see if we can get to a point there so we can start moving this forward.
I understand, yes. I apologize. I think it should say, read something like, the master plan should be concurrent with the approval of this project. Now it just says that there's a desire to work cooperatively and have this master plan. It should state that it should be concurrent. I mean, I don't know how long it's going to take, but let's get started on it. Would that be acceptable to everybody, that'd be concurrent with the approval?
What I'm kind of hoping that we can get you to do is just list specifically which those things, so you're saying you want concurrent?
Well, that's a specific thing, that it's concurrent with the approval of the project, that the master plan starts to take place. It just doesn't happen eventually.
Okay, what else?
Okay. And then I think it is, it would be wise to state such as. I think we should state some things. Why not? Such as, and the things that I just stated. And you're absolutely right, Commissioner Reynolds, we're never going to get them all.
But then we have to go back to the applicant reels and public hearing and ask if they agree with this?
No, we don't.
No, there's that.
At this stage, what we're doing is we would just be amending a condition that's there. So we would.
Yeah. So it begins concurrent with the potential approval of the project and addresses issues such as, and, you know, we can talk about the light at the Medical Center Drive, we can talk about pedestrian access from the parking garage to the hospital, we can talk about the potential closure of Sidley, all right? We can talk about sound walls and noise, that's another thing that came up on Lynn Road. I mean, I guess I could run off this huge laundry list, but I don't know. I just think it, I think we need to make it a little more specific, and I think you have a good idea. Commissioner Romney, why not throw a few specifics in there? I mean, that's what we had the hearing for, right? So we could hear what was on people's minds. So let's let the council know.
Okay. So again, what I'm looking to see is that you're making a recommendation, and your recommendation is, is to change number five under the master plan and make sure that the master plan is concurrent with?
Key word, concurrent with the approval of this project.
Okay. And that the master plan would incorporate, it would incorporate areas such as the light at Medical Center Drive, the pedestrian access throughout the site, the closure at Sidley, correct? Did I miss something else?
Noise and sound walls.
Noise and sound walls.
Along Lynn, I think the residents brought that up, that there's sound walls on. I mean, just because, you know, it doesn't mean it's happened, but let's at least address it.
Okay, I understand. Mr. Towne, do you have a comment to make?
Quick clarification. Commissioner Adam, you mentioned the idea of a signal at Medical Center Drive. Are you thinking of Lynn or Jan's or both?
I was only thinking at Medical Center Drive and Jan's.
Okay. That's all.
Okay, so Commissioner Adams, are you wanting to make a motion at this point in time for this and with adding that to it?
Commissioner Fisher make the motion? I'm adding.
There has been no motion made to this point.
Oh, we were just discussing, haven't we?
I'll be glad to take it on.
Okay, Commissioner. Oh, I think you're losing your opportunity here.
No, no, no.
I gave you like a whole lot here.
Hold on now. Hold on. I'm not going to get contingent, am I? I'm going to get concurrent, but I'm not going to get contingent. Do you understand what I'm saying? Master plan be concurrent with approval, but not contingent on approval.
Well, I think perhaps you got an opportunity for a motion, but I'm going to pass it to Commissioner Fisher with an opportunity to make a motion, and then we can discuss it from there.
Okay, all right.
Okay, let's try this out. I move that we recommend to the city council, general plan amendment LU 2008 70302, zone change 2008 70301, special use permit major modification 2008 7076, development permit 2008 7077, oak tree permit 2008 70705, with suggested conditions by staff, I believe it was condition 212, condition 41, condition 165. I'm not sure what condition was, review the landscape slope, and... And condition five master plan, recommend to the council that it should be concurrent with the approval process of this project to look at and consider additional items such as the stoplight at Medical Center Drive and Jan's, pedestrian throughway, possible closure of Sidley, and internal traffic movements.
Mr. Town has some additional clarification, then we'll have comments to the motion.
Just a quick clarification again. The changes to the conditions that Commissioner Fisher, you're stating would include condition 212, condition 41, condition five, which is the master plan. But on condition number 165, which has to do with use of the vacant building, just to be clear for everybody present, staff did not agree with modifying that condition. So I just wanted to clarify which way you were headed, if you were supporting changing it or not changing it for the record.
That's correct.
Good, okay.
Not changing it.
Okay, so we have the motion. And so Commissioner Reynolds, and then we'll go to Commissioner Adam.
Don't we have to certify the EIR also in this?
Yes, with certification of the EIR.
Okay. Commissioner Adam?
Just a friendly addition to the number five for Commissioner Fisher, where we state that it's concurrent, and you added the other one. Let's not just limit it to, you know, to those points that we made about the stoplight and everything. I mean, we should leave it open-ended. Such as, but not necessarily... Not limited to, thank you. Such as, but not limited to. And then, this is really important. The city desires to work cooperatively with the... All it says here is the applicant and the owners of the adjacent property. There's one group of people missing, the residents. Let's add them, please.
What residents?
These residents.
No, I'm... I think that from what development? Just any of them around? I mean...
Well, how do you phrase that?
How do you define that?
Okay, well, no, that's a different topic.
I'm going to interject. When you're doing a master plan, generally you talk about the owners, the property owners. So they can be involved in the process as any... To participate, but they're not owners of the property being proposed to be developed. So they have a different type of standing than the owners. For example, if you're doing a specific plan, it affects the owners in a specific area. If you do a development agreement, it affects the owner of the property. So they're involved in the process. There'll be notifications. If there's public hearings and it gets to that point, they'll be involved. There'll be notification requirements. They'll have their chance to say their piece at community meetings, at public meetings before this board, more than likely, and the city council. So I just want to clarify, it's a different type of relationship than with the property owners.
Well, wait a minute now. How could we put... You know what I'm driving at. Is there another word for residents that I'm missing here, or what?
But it's not... Is there another word? It's how you want them involved in the process. If you lump everyone together, the whole world, it's difficult to even unwind, so...
Well, right here it says the applicant, which is the hospital.
Right.
And the owners of adjacent properties. See, that says to me, that's the six owners.
Correct.
Ah, but, okay, what about the people that live on Sidley and Young and Oberlin? Should we say in the residents of the affected? How do you...
But if they're not part of the plan area, they don't have the standing to dictate the terms of the agreement, other than in a public forum like here, say...
I'm not saying they dictate. I'm just saying they be involved in the process, that's all.
Well, I would highly recommend that you make what their involvement is specific because it's different than the owners being involved in it.
It's no less specific than what it says here about the applicants and the owners of adjacent properties. It just says that there'll be desire to work cooperatively with the applicant and the owners of adjacent properties. How can we... We're missing a contingent here. How can we add the homeowners in the immediate area? I don't know. How do you put that in there?
Anybody has a right to vote.
Yeah, but it's leaving...
They don't have a vote.
If they're not part of the plan area, they don't have...
All right, so the homeowners in the plan area.
The plan area is probably going to just be the hospital and the six adjacent properties. So I know where you're going. I just want to make it clear, I don't want to have a condition in there that gives the property owners a sense that they have a right to veto the master plan because that would not be...
I'm not getting it wrong.
That would not be a fair statement of law, but I don't want to give that appearance in the condition.
I'm not going there. I'm saying that... All I'm saying is they should be involved in the process. So is there any way to put that in there?
I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means. It has no legal significance.
Well, when the city and the applicant and the six property owners sit down to talk about the master plan, and we're asking to be concurrent with the approval of this project, that there be some residents at the table.
And...
And they'll have input.
I...
Okay.
I don't like that condition. I don't think it's enforceable, and I think it creates more issues than it solves.
How about if you just add it, "As part of the process will solicit input from surrounding neighbors."
That's... Yeah, okay.
That's fine.
Is that good?
Yeah, sure.
Well, you... Mr. Norman, you yourself acknowledged that this thing is only talking about the applicant and the six property owners.
Because they would be in the project area, the master plan area, that's why.
I understand. But, well, maybe Mr. Fisher got it there when he said...
That's fine. I just... You called it out differently, so I can live with that.
Can we put that... Say that again, please?
To include surrounding or to include...
To solicit, you said.
To solicit public input from the surrounding neighbors.
That's good. Okay, so that means we... It'll be done.
Okay, comments to the motion.
Presumably.
Commissioner Reynolds, do you have any comments to the motion?
I'll just say that I support the motion.
Okay. Any further... Can we vote, please?
We have master... We have number five down, right?
We have number five down.
Concurrent, neighbors, looking at certain things that we listed.
Yes.
But not limited to, right? Okay.
Can we vote, please?
Motion passed, 4-0.
Okay, as this is a recommendation, final decision will be made by the city council, which will be open for the public to attend and participate. Mr. Town, any community development department referrals and reports?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With regard to upcoming meetings of the commission, at this point, we do not have any hearings scheduled for the next regular meeting on June 14th. So at this point, we should consider cancellation of the June 14th meeting. However, we do have the California Lutheran University Football Stadium proposed for June 21st, which is a special meeting to hear that case only. And those are my comments at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Town, do we have to take any action to cancel that meeting, or is that something...
No, you don't necessarily have to take action. There are no hearings scheduled, and at this point, it would be impossible to provide such notice. So the next regular meeting, next meeting would be June 21st, special meeting to hear the CLU football stadium proposal.
Okay. Commissioner Reynolds, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move approval of the minutes of the meeting, May 10th, 2010.
Could we vote, please? Are there any AV 1234 reports? Any commissioners' comments?
Let me say the vote.
Oh.
On the minutes, the vote is three to... Oh, three to zero, with Commissioner Fisher abstaining.
Any commissioner comments? If not, I adjourn this meeting for our next regular scheduled meeting, which will be June 21st, 2010. Thank you and good evening.